Audio, please. Audio. Good morning, colleagues. For those of you who are here, I would like to ask the clerk again to please announce who is in the session hall.
The present session hall are Senator Rector, Senator Uggan, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Panglinen, and yourself, Madam Speaker. There are only five; there is no quorum.
Thank you very much. Sergeant Arms, can you please, again? Oh, and Senator Palacios has just walked in. Two, four, six, seven. Please call the other members so that we can get a quorum. Thank you. Can I ask the clerk again? It's about 9:29. Can you please let me know who are the senators who are in the hall? And if we have a quorum so we can start.
Our Senator Rector, Senator Uggan, Senator Panglinen, Senator Palacios, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Ada, yourself. Two, four, six, seven.
What happened? Senator Guthers? Is Senator Guthers? I thought I saw her. Please, senators, come in. We need to have one more to have a quorum so we can start. I'm going to send out a memo, and I'm going to start charging for tardiness.
And Senators Bowdoin making eight. Nine with Senator Guthers.
Thank you very much. The legislature is called into session. I'd like to recognize Senator Palacios on Bill 176.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 176-30, we place on the third reading file for purpose of discussion, and if I may just give a brief remark.
Yes, please continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, because of the Attorney General's office, of course, in search of additional funds to augment the limited funds provided under the current Budget Act, they became interested in perhaps restoring the Public Notary Revolving Fund back to the, under the AG. There was a time when Public Law 23-81 actually established the notary public revolving fund and placed it under the AG, but through subsequent laws that was passed by this legislature, and I remember at one time when the amount of all these special accounts amounted to about a million dollars, we were looking for where can we get some money to augment the revenue source for the budget at that time. It was lumped together and actually almost, because they were inactive account, and they were all transferred to the general funds. General funds. Now, the AG is interested in some kind of legislation, which is actually the intention of Bill 176, to restore what was a revolving fund that they can use. And actually, Bill, the funds to be used is for, of course, for the administration of the notary public program. The Attorney General's office is the authority that today approve, not republic, administer, examination, review, those documents that are required under the program. There was about three, five years ago when I attempted to apply for, I guess, a notary public as a private person in relation to a business, and there was some challenge there of getting here and there and character reference. So there's some time in, really, in administering this. And while they administer currently the program, the funds, there is funds, fee paid over to the revolving fund, but under the Department of Administration going to the general funds. So there will not be a new fee or a new money here, but rather to get the account and to put it under the AG for the purpose of administering again the notary program, including personnel costs for training, notary educational programs and conferences, and additional administrative and costs. And I understand that the cost for this is $100 a fee. I understand the notary public term, I think, is at least three years. And of course, Government of Guam notary public are exempted from this fee, and this is for the private sector notary public. This can certainly augment the funds that they have and perhaps increase the services, continue to improve the services. The, of course, the, right now, the way they use general funds to provide this service and anything that associated with this service is coming out of the general funds. So whatever fund that can be received through this would really help, and that is the purpose of this. Again, it is an existing account, and it was just now to put it under the Office of the Attorney General so that they can use it to continue in the administration of the notary public program. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. On the motion then, are there any speakers? Senator Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have no objection to the bill. I do want to, however, add just a minor amendment at the end of line 17 of page two, where it says, "Equipment Costs," and I wanted to replace that period with a comma and just add the words, "Subject to appropriation by Illes Leturanguan." Once again, Madam Speaker, as we try to find all these funds and we start to segregate funds for use by these various specific entities, we still need to have some kind of cohesive disposition of these funds based upon the overall financial picture of the Government of Guam and would place the authority to spend under this fund. I have no problem with dedicating it to the expenditure for the purposes outlined herein, but I wanted it to ensure that the authority to spend shall be through the legislative appropriation process. So it would be just to add that word, "Subject to appropriation by Illes Leturanguan."
On the Panglinen amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the motion? Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I too would like to stand in support of this particular amendment. I think that when you have an entity, in this particular case, is the Office of the Attorney General, that is administering the notary program, they rightfully should be given the opportunity to be able to access the resources and the funds and the fees that are paid out to, for that particular certificate that eventually is acquired, and use it specifically for program-related operations. So I think that this is, this particular legislative measure moves in that particular direction. It recognizes not only that most of the components of the notary public program is administered out of the Office of the Attorney General, and rightfully so, those proceeds and any revenues generated therein should be utilized specifically for the implementation, the training, the education, and carrying out the mandate of that particular program, in this case, as it applies to notary public. So I stand in full support of this particular measure. The only concern I have, and I'll just share it as a concern, Madam Speaker, not necessarily with a proposed amendment, but I noticed that on page three, there are fees established here. For example, in line 16, the Attorney General may charge a $50 non-refundable fee for a certificate of authority. And I think that we may be venturing into a situation where down the road, whether it's five years or six years or seven years down the road, where the Office of the Attorney General may come back to the legislative body and say, "By the way, $50 does not cover the cost. The recoverable cost of providing that particular certificate, and it needs to be adjusted." So I just wanted to share a concern that any time that we codify a specific fee, that it's subject to eventual consideration down the road in terms of allowing this, in this case, the Attorney General's office to request adjustments down the road. So what has been the approach that has been taken in the past has really been more or less allowing, perhaps establishing the initial fee by code, and then allowing through the AAA process, this particular entity or government entities to be able to adjust the fees accordingly as they see fit, based on the use of the Administrative Adjudication Act process. So I just wanted to share that particular concern because I don't, I'm not too peculiar in setting fees by mandate, but by, but allowing for that flexibility, I think, would be a much better approach in terms of supporting the government agencies as well as the programs. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. Are there any of the speakers? Then I'd like to offer the author to close, Senator Palacios. No, no need. Okay, then. On the motion to place Bill 176 in the third reading file, without any objections, so Bill number 177, I'd like to recognize the author, Senator Palacios.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would like to move that Bill 177-30, we place on the third reading file for purpose of discussion, and if I may give again a brief remark on this.
Please, you have your seat.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, during the testimony referenced to this, it was revealed that the Attorney General's office right now issues anywhere between three, four, maximum of 500 pieces annually of clearances from the AG. Now, more and more, the AG clearance is in demand, especially for licensing for ABC Board, for ABC, for business, where criminal history is to be validated. And a lot of times, if a person would go, for example, to the Guam Police Department and get a police clearance showing that there's an arrest but no disposition, the court has no record of that. Now, the AG actually is the final say with respect to whether this person has a record or not, and if it has a record, whether it's a pending record or not. This is a very useful clearance, especially those who are contemplating on going, joining the armed forces of our nation. They need clearance from the AG only. And so, right now, they do this, about up to 500 maybe annually, and of course, they don't charge for that. And all they're asking is that, at least if they can recover the cost, which is, the charge at this point contemplated, this will be the same amount as for police clearance, which is $15, or for police, for court clearance, which is $15, whichever is, may be desired, I think, by the person that wanted the clearance. Probably, if this passes, it would, it would look like, if I have a record, I'll just go straight, for example, to the AG. Because if the AG says that I don't have any record, then even the police says I have a record. The AG would be the ultimate decision at that point, in my opinion, because they always seem to be considered as the ultimate determination of the status of that person. And these fees, if collected, of course, should be put into a special account for, to pay for victim or witness travel and housing. A lot of times, especially our tourist visitors, and they have been victimized, they had to go back in three or four days. Depending on the nature of the crime, sometimes there's a need to bring them back in. They use now, the AG uses now, general funds to pay for this. And of course, this legislature provides funds for that. Now, this would be a new fee, but not in the sense that it's an additional fee. It's actually the option of the person. If they were to obtain an AG, they don't have to, but if they need, then, I guess, they have to pay. So it's more or less can be considered a usage fee. And so that is what they're asking for, and that's what they, the purpose of the fee is for. Again, the testimony was given, of course, by the Fionter Dinko. There's no other testimony provided regarding this bill. And I ask my colleagues to look at the bill, and if we can improve on it and consider it, then of course, we'll, but I hope that we can pass this bill and give the AG some kind of, I guess, some kind of, I guess, program where they can at least recover the cost and put it in some kind of an account to pay for the witness travel and the victim's travel. And probably the funds from this probably will still have to be, again, subject to legislative approval. There's no, there's no harm down there. There should be the amendments. I don't see any, any of that kind of provision here. So I will leave that up to my colleague. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. On the motion, Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in support of the proposed measure, but you know what's interesting is the, really, the evolution of government. Having been served in this body for almost a total timeframe of 11, 12 years, I've seen the Government of Guam go from a position of having so many special fund accounts, and then the OPA, Office of the Public Accountability, had recommended that many of those special funds be deleted, extracted, and consolidation of all of those resources into the general fund or to, or to a lesser number of special funds. And then it looks like, I guess, we're starting to, or should this legislation pass, move in the direction of granting entities direct participation and accountability of the resources that they generate on a regular basis. And to me, it all comes down to accountability and transparency in terms of what resources are being generated, what kind of revenues are being reported on a monthly basis, and allowing, I guess I would yield to the Chair of Finance, but allowing for this body to be able to recognize how much resources or finances or revenues is generated on an annual basis, and giving that authority to be able to allow the different agencies to spend those finances. But when I talk about transparency and accountability, I think it brings me back to this whole idea about the creation of a new fund, but really, there has to be a reporting requirement so that in fact, on a monthly basis, we, you receive a number of financial reports on a monthly basis from all of the different Government of Guam agencies, reflecting not only the staffing pattern on a quarterly basis, but on a monthly basis, how much revenues were generated, collected in the prior years, and how they've been expended. And I think it's important that, because this is the establishment of a new special fund, that this particular special fund also fall into that category of reportable requirements. So, Madam Speaker, I'd like to propose a general amendment. I have not killed any trees yet, but if in fact that's going to be a requirement, then I will do so. But just at the end of line 23, Madam Speaker, to incorporate-
What page?
On page three.
Page three.
I'm sorry. Page three, which establishes this fund, at the end of line 23, to insert the phrase, "Government of Guam financial reporting requirements shall be applicable herein." So basically, it would also require that every single month, regardless as to what revenues are generated and how these, these revenues are expended, that based on the timelines, that a financial report also be provided as it applies to this special fund. So, Madam Speaker, if I can move for the addition or insertion of that phrase at the end of line 23, "Government of Guam financial reporting requirements shall be applicable herein." Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
We're gonna need to have that in writing for the clerks, please. Is anybody would like to speak on the amendment? On the, not on the amendment. Are there any objections to the amendment? No objections? I'm sorry. Well, he's gonna have to get it in writing for the clerk. You want to have it in writing for yourself?
Yeah. Just a minute. That's subject to the appropriation.
So why don't we take a brief recess? We're gonna have copies of that amendment then passed out. Concession, Senator Agun, you're recognized on your amendment. I hope everybody has a copy.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and this would be added to the end of line 23, and it inserts Speaker Ben Panglinan's added quote of ensuring that it receives proper legislative concurrence. And it reads, it would read, "Government of Guam financial reporting requirements shall be applicable herein, period. The fund shall be subject to appropriation by Elias Laturonguahan." Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, are there any speakers? No objections? So, thank you very much, Senator Agun. On the motion then, Senator Panglinan, and then I-
Oh, Senator.
Oh, well, I had, okay, no problem.
I like that.
Thank you very much.
Sisus Maasi, Madam Speaker, and Manane Sisus, and thank you to my good neighbor over here for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Madam Speaker, I do not have any objections to the intent of this bill. I applaud the author's efforts in pushing this bill forward. I do just want to note for the record that I may just probably have some concerns regarding how, if this legislation gets passed into law, where my concerns will fall is, my question is on timeline. As noted by the legislative findings and intent, it specifically says here that this august body finds that those seeking to join the military or applying for law enforcement or security-type jobs with local, state, or federal agencies, a police clearance will show the arrest within the past year, but no disposition because the police or the local law enforcements have not referred the matter to the office of the Attorney General for their review and disposition. And then it goes on to talk about those applying for the ABC liquor licenses within another regulatory agency, which is like Department of Revenue and Taxation. And they simply cannot provide that police clearance because there contains an arrest. And like what I spoke about with just a couple of days ago is, when somebody gets arrested, at least I believe in my heart that everybody's innocent till they're proven guilty. And in this kind of take, again, we have a failure or a loophole or a falling through the cracks that matters weren't referred to the proper agency so that, because there are timelines when arrests are made. Depending on the criminal activity that was done for the reason the arrest was made, there's a timeline for each case. So, and I was sharing with my colleague my concerns on the issue of timelines and knowing that it shows here by the findings and intent that over 500 applications a year are sent to the Attorney General's office for clearances. And then it was noted that there is more than 500, even up to 700 cases that are being referred that way. My take is, I support the bill. I just want to know if we should put any provisions in for some kind of timeline based on what's happening, because we already pay for police clearances, we already pay for court clearances, and we already have our constituents out there in the community pay for traffic clearances. And if this gets legislated, it would be a fourth clearance. And my take is, where do we draw the line on how many clearances need to be adhered to before an employer or somebody who's trying to entertain the constituent, how many clearances do we need? And I know that without the AG's support on this disposition, it can still be held up. And now that we're saying, okay, now that we're going to impose a fine, I mean, a fee, then we're going to act more, we're going to act further into making sure that the disposition gets received? I mean, my take is, there needs to be some kind of timeline. So I just bring this out for my colleagues to-
Senator, would you like the author to respond, maybe to some of your concerns?
Yeah, that sounds like a good thing.
Senator Palasces.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the AG clearance is one of four clearances available to the individual, to an individual. And really, it is up to the requestor of the clearance. In this case, if the military establishment won all the clearance, then if the individual cannot provide that, the individual probably would not be considered. But I don't foresee that. The point is, whether there's an arrest or not, the AG, of course, the Guam Police Department is required by law that those police reports, especially if it's a felony, be transmitted within 24, within 48 hours to the AG, because they have to magistrate that individual. Now, if it's a misdemeanor, then I think they have 12 months to do that. That's internal policy. But it's going to show on record. Again, the requestor of a clearance, if this goes through, and if I were needing a police clearance this time, I'll go straight to the AG's office. Because if they don't have anything on me, most likely the AG wouldn't have, even if GPD would have anything on me, the GPD, if the AG doesn't have, the AG is the ultimate, I guess, certifier that there's no record on myself. So whether the person needs all of it or just one of it, it's really up to the individual. And right now, they're providing that clearance, because there are, a lot of people are required to get clearance from the AG. The only problem is that the AG cannot recover costs. And all they're asking on this bill is that, the same cost as for police clearance or for court clearance, which is, I think, at this point, $15. So the timeline, again, it's all these different agencies. It all actually depends on the individual who wants the clearance, whether, if he wants it all, he can pay for it all, $60, I think. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Munya Barnes is-
Sisus Maasi.
-able to answer some of your concerns?
Madam Speaker, yes, it does address some of my concerns. And again, I share with this body that I don't have any objections to the bill, and hopefully, maybe just then hope to talk to the author of the legislation and maybe just putting a maximum requirement of what can be assessed as a charge, and maybe do a standalone bill in reference to timelines. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome. Senator Munya Barnes. I have Senator Panglinan on the motion.
Sisus Maasi, Madam Speaker, and Madam Governor. You know, I'm really not certain with regards to why we need this. Is there something in the system that's not working? We're requiring, what happens if an arrest warrant gets forwarded? I guess an arrest warrant gets forwarded to the AG's office, and then the AG's office is responsible for reviewing the case, or not the arrest warrant, but I guess the arrest record. And whether they decide to prosecute or not, they would gather the arrest record and the evidence gathered that is submitted to the AG. And then the AG makes a decision whether to prosecute or not. If they prosecute, then it goes to the court, and then, of course, we have a record of the disposition, so you can match the arrest to the disposition at the court. It's what happens when they decline to prosecute? Do they just leave it lie and not tell the client or the arrestee? And that's why we don't have a record of what happens to this? If that's the case, I don't think we should be charging for providing that, because that should be part of the AG's job, that somehow they provide a disposition, a report of the disposition of everything that gets forwarded to them. Maybe put it on their website and just a case number, so that you, as an arrestee, can just go there and say, you know, that, I think maybe that's a better bill, that, for me, that we require the AG to post the case number and the disposition of whatever's been forwarded to them, and there's your court clearance. There's your clearance, and you print it out and say, here's the arrest record, here's the police report, I have an arrest record number, here's the arrest record number and the case number from the AG's website, or I go get a copy if that's what we're looking for, and the AG makes a determination. So to kind of put a charge on finding out whether they're doing their job or not is almost, you know, insult to injury, I guess. First, they arrest you, then they don't want to prosecute you, and then you have to pay them to tell you that. Somehow, that doesn't seem right in terms of the processes, if I understand them correctly. Of course, the other thing is, maybe the police also needs to do something that maybe not every arrest gets forwarded to the AG, so the AG would have no record. So maybe we also need to get the police department to update the police clearance report and say, not only is, here's you were arrested, case not forwarded for prosecution for whatever reason. That way, you don't have to go to the AG and find out, hey, did the cops send my arrest over there to you, and are you going to prosecute me? I'm going to pay them $15 to tell me, I'm going to pay you $15 to tell me. Somehow, we got to fix this linkages rather than just having our people come in and, in these hard times, when they're trying to apply for a job, now they got to pay the cops to say, hey, what did you do with me? What have you decided to do with me? Go to the AG and said, hey, the cops said they sent this over here, what did you do with me? What have you decided to do with me? And then we go to the court and said, hey, you know, give me something that says whatever. I mean, let's try to kind of fix some of these things and require, like I said, require the police clearance to determine, to specifically state their decision not to send for prosecution, so there's no, we already know then there's no record at all at the AG, and you don't have to get an AG clearance because if you've been arrested, because it says right there on your police clearance what they decided to do with you. And then if there, if it does get sent to the AG, then the AG needs to make a decision on that case and tell the individual. And when they tell the individual, they should do it in writing and send him a letter, and there's his AG clearance. And it's all part of the prosecution, it's all part of their budget, it's all part of their job. We don't need to charge the public more to let them know that we decided we're doing our job or not doing our job. So I understand the need to do this, or the desire to do this. I don't understand the need to do this and put our people and charge our people a little bit more, when I think in the process of doing their job, we can solve this problem without incurring any additional costs and, in my opinion, provide better public service to the people. Because once the AG has a file in its hands, it should make a decision, and the decision they make on that can't be just let it lie and whatever. It should be, we should require them to put in writing what they decide to do and notify the individual, give them a letter. It's part of the case, it's part of their salary, it's part of their regular operational procedure, so there's no additional cost you need to incur to have somebody come in and then generate new work to say you've been cleared. Why not just make it part of the workflow in the original handling of that case that is sent over from the police department? So that's the way I look at this, that's the way I think, that's the way I believe we can have a new way of kind of putting in things in terms of fixing some of these systems to improve the current workflow without adding any cost and ensuring that our people don't have to bear any additional costs in this whole process. So that's kind of the way I've looked at this. I'm not, I understand what we're attempting to do, but maybe there's a better way to solve the system which doesn't put a burden on our people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinan. I, Senator, the Vice Speaker, I think you were motioning that you wanted to respond.
It really would take a standalone bill. This is just a fee that's being imposed, but there are various problems. When you're arrested and it doesn't get, and it just stays over at GPD, sometimes it's not forwarded up, your police clearance will show 10 arrests. The AG might only show that three of them got to them, and only one got to the court for disposition. And so you have a mess there that really needs a major overhaul. I've been in consultation with the Chief Justice about trying to figure out a way that we can try to figure out how to clean this up, and there'll be a bill forthcoming on this issue. But it is, because if you try to go, I mean, some people, you know, get arrested, but there's been no prosecution, but when they go try to get a police clearance, you were arrested. And when you're asked that question, were you ever arrested, you have to say yes, unless you're going to lie on your form. And so that is, that will always be on the GPD record, and we have to discuss with GPD how we clear that, if we clear that, why it's necessary to keep it on there, to make sure that, you can't just keep erasing and expunging these, because for various reasons, it might need to be kept for, in the event something else happens in the future, it can show that though he wasn't prosecuted as a sex criminal, you see what's happening in the States with these serial murderers and that Garrido case. I mean, it's just, you need, someplace needs to keep these records, but it doesn't necessarily need to go out to the employers that it's there, because nothing has happened, it's just for the record-keeping. And we've got to talk to these departments about how these things are done, and how best to notify the employer that this is not a dangerous person, but this, we do have this record from many years ago. And so it's a lot more complicated. This one's just a fee bill, and I'd have no objection to the Attorney General trying to at least recover a little bit of the cost of, I mean, even that's not going to recover the cost, the $10 isn't going to cover the cost of having somebody go through the records to find it. But whatever it is that she can, the office can recover, I support it. But we're going to need to get everybody together to try to figure out what is necessary to go out to employers, and what is necessary for GPD and the Attorney General to keep in its records, even if it doesn't have to be put out in the clearances. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that explanation. Can we just take a brief recess? Can we just take a brief recess? Since no one wants to listen to the author, this is the only way I'll be able to get your attention. Senator Palacios, in response to some of the concerns.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, Madam Speaker, even if police reports are forwarded to the Attorney General's office, on the misdemeanor cases, the AG has 12 months to bring that before the court. On the felony cases, three years. That's the statute of limitation. It's actually most commonly during this period of time when cases are unresolved. And so the AG, probably if this bill passes, it actually would be to the benefit of the subject individual. Why? Because now the AG is forced to make a decision, maybe even within a three-month period, just what is going to be the disposition? Are you going to file charges or what? And a lot of times at that point, if it comes to military individuals, they just defer prosecution. And that would be sufficient. I had the occasion, I think six months ago, where actually a local member of the armed forces stationed in Alaska, they were home, they called, they, port of call, they called that when they came here. And then one weekend, I actually got locked up. Now, he will not, he was not going to be allowed to board back to the ship and go back to Alaska until you get clearance. I had to call, of course, Attorney Tidinko, and then connect with the commanding office of this individual. I set up a meeting. And then at that point, the individual was cleared, but the, it's a conditional clearance. It's a deferred prosecution that if the individual behaved okay for the next four months, then they would dismiss. But it is at this point that a police clearance is actually the authority accepted by the military individuals. And again, most of the time, the clearance cases are pending, because the AG, in terms of their priority with their limited resources, they may have the case, but not yet filed. Remember that they have three years to file on a felony and one year on a misdemeanor. So it depends on what comes up, the landfill issue, the receivership issue and so forth. People need to get clearance, and those are the circumstances. And again, the requester has the option. Just go straight to the AG if that is the, the, what is becoming the valid clearance among the four, I think, except traffic clearance. If you were to operate a taxi, for example, you absolutely have to have a traffic clearance with the court. So that's the situation. And again, I agree with the retired Chief Justice that maybe on those other issues, there has to be a standalone bill that perhaps they can, there should be one single authority that would have the absolute authority to declare the criminal record of an individual or something like that. But as it is right now, it is actually the employer that's actually requiring the submission of some of this. And I am not about to go there and mandate that they can only request one or things like that. Now, as to the fee here, the fee is the same thing as what is now being charged for police clearance. So in this case, the police department and the individual got a police clearance, he paid fifteen dollars. Then the employer said, well, give me this position or that. They go to the AG, the AG is going to provide that for free. And I'm saying they just, they just wanted to be able to recover costs. If we can minimize that, we can look at that later on. But the single purpose of the bill, 177, Madam Speaker, is to allow the AG to recover what they are now doing, which is the equivalent of the police clearance that's being charged by the Guam Police Department to recover, I guess, costs for providing those services. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. On the motions, Senator Rector, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I've got a couple of problems with this, and it's not so much with the author of the bill. I understand, generally, we're always trying to balance the budget and make it so that our public structure has the funding needed to properly give our people the services that they need. But the way we're doing it isn't working out too well for me, for one reason. When we have a flat fee like this, it is a regressive tax, which means that it makes poor people pay more than rich people. A ten-dollar fee on somebody that's making seven dollars an hour means they got to work an hour and a half or two hours after you take out taxes and social security to pay for it. Whereas if an attorney has to go and get it, and they make two-hundred-and-fifty dollars an hour, they have to work, what, like 10 minutes? You see, it's regressive. It's not fair to the people that are out looking for jobs and looking for work. Now, that being said, the whole thing's not fair. You know, I think we are one of the only, if not the only, place in the United States that allows employers to put this burden on potential employees. Look, when I filled out an application for a job, they will ask me, have you ever been convicted of a felony? I answer, no. Take me at my word. If you, the employer, do not trust me, and you, the employer, consider me a liar, then you can pay to get all the checks and balances done. You can pay to investigate me. That's the way it works just about everywhere else. But instead, what we do is we automatically, on Guam, assume that every employee and potential employee is a liar. What is that? That's a crazy way to do business, and it's crazy for us. So what we do is we have this whole group of employers that automatically assume that everybody applying for a job is a liar, and they need a court clearance and a police clearance and an AG clearance to apply for a job. That's horrible. And it's expensive for people. And it puts an additional burden on our public structure, because most of the people don't need it. I mean, good gosh, if I'm applying to be a weed whacker, what do I need a police and court clearance for? What am I going to do, steal the grass? I mean, that's just stupid, right off the bat. We don't need this, and we don't need to do this, right? And I've been working on a bill to prohibit employers from requesting all of these upfront, basically, proof that you're not a liar statements from potential employees. It's not right. It's not just. Adding another fee and another burden on the backs of the unemployed and the people looking for work is just not the right way to go, in my opinion. And as much as I appreciate the author's intent and the way to move forward on this, I'm afraid I just can't vote for this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. On the motion, are there any other speakers? Senator Palacios, you would like to close in?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, of course, I share the sentiments of the speakers on this bill. Now, with respect to the fee of fifteen dollars, I say fifteen dollars because it says, the bill says that it has to be equal with what the Guam Police Department charged or the court charged, and I understand that that's the fee. And while I understand, of course, the nature of regressive tax, the fee is established not on the ability of the individual to pay, but rather on what it costs this government to produce the document. And of course, there have been analysis and research done by the court. That's how they arrive at fifteen dollars, by the Guam Police Department, because you have to keep these records, plus you have to be accurate, plus you place your authority on it. And all those things come together. And again, it's just to recover the cost. Now, I like the idea. I'm interested in the idea of how we can limit private enterprise, private employer, from requiring all this. I will look at that and probably will follow some reason. But in the end, again, the employer, in deciding whether to employ this individual, would have to be satisfied. And if say, I need clearance, and if you don't have clearance, and I'm forbidden by the government to require you clearance, then I guess I'm just going to have to guess. And a lot of times, the doubt is resolved in favor of the potential employer, the employer, of not having to take a person that's not cleared. It's complicated. It's complicated. And again, I go back to the simple proposal of this bill. It's just to be allowed to recover what they are now doing, recover costs of fifteen in the way that the court, right now, currently charged for court clearance and so forth. Again, and this is, again, a useless fee. Subject, of course, is the person that's requesting. If the person doesn't need it, they don't have to pay, of course, because they don't have. And I ask my colleagues to give this consideration, and soon, hopefully, in this term, we'll be able to look at this. And again, the suggestion of the retired Chief Justice that we look at this, and then maybe we have a central authority that can issue clearance that would encompass all of these three or four clearances that's now required that would satisfy the employer. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. On the motion, enter place Bill 177, third reading filed. No objections, so order. We're now on Bill 181-30. I'd like to recognize the author, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Good morning. I do have Bill Number 30-181COR, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to move that this particular legislation, as amended by the Committee on Economic Development, Health and Human Services, and Judiciary, be placed in the third reading filed.
And you'd like to discuss it?
Please.
Please stand proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this is a proposal that was requested by the judiciary of Guam. And basically, it's not a new idea. There's existing code, or there's an existing law that allows for annual adjustment or adjustments of judges' compensation. And there was a particular timeline that was incorporated into the existing code on May 1st. And the request was to allow for any consideration as it applies to adjustments in compensation for judges, that it carry the decision-making process carried to the end of the fiscal year, which would be September 30th of every year. So that's what subsection A would provide. It would read, "And amend the existing law prior to October 1st, rather than prior to May 1st," by the Judicial Council. Then it also, based on the recommendations of a number of our colleagues, rather than just highlighting, in this case, the judges and the presiding judge, to also allow for consideration, and it's enumerated here on line eight, that the justices of the Supreme Court would be inclusive in this consideration. And it would delete the phrase on line 11, "The annual compensation for the PJ", only because it's already, it would already be incorporated into any consideration as it applies to this provision. Also, Madam Speaker, it allows for any decision by the Judicial Council of Guam that if, in fact, there's going to be any compensation adjustment, that it has to be incorporated or absorbed internally, rather than submitting a supplemental request to this legislative body. So it has to, it would require that, and it's in subsection B, line 13, page 1, "Funding requirements for any adjustment approved by the Judicial Council shall be contained within its approved fiscal year budget. Provided, however, if the salary adjustments are not directly cited in the budget, then any funding requirement shall be absorbed within its approved fiscal year budget." Also, Madam Speaker, any time that a decision is rendered by the Judicial Council, there's an existing provision that requires that that salary adjustment be incorporated into the budget. But because, should this legislative measure pass, the timeline will be extended to the end of the fiscal year. And in most cases, the budgets are submitted to the Chair of the Finance Committee by April, I guess it's the end of January or February, and in some cases, inclusive of March, that if any decision is made subsequent to that date, then obviously it would not be incorporated into the annual budget. And that's where subsection C comes in, and it stipulates that it should be incorporated into the budget submitted to the legislative body. Subsection D, on line 7, page 2, highlights that any decision that is made under this particular provision for salary adjustments for the judges, that the adjustments be effective in the subsequent fiscal year. And it would read, that's subsection D, "The annual adjustment of the judicial salaries affected pursuant to the previous section shall take effect and be implemented at the beginning of the subsequent fiscal year following approval by the Judicial Council." So that, I think, would also address some of the components in terms of the funding. And then finally, section 2, Madam Speaker, there was a decision by the Judicial Council, I believe, in its last meeting in September, that in fact, there would be a consideration for salary adjustments for the judges. And that section 2 would allow, and I know one of our very good colleagues in this hallway does not like preconceived decisions prior to the effective date of that. But it would allow for enactment to take place should this provision become law. But that decision by resolution by the Judicial Council, yes, there is, there was a previous decision that was made in September of this year, which is a month, month and a half ago, that in fact, there would be a salary adjustments provided to the judges should this proposal pass. And this is section 2, which would address that decision, but that keep in mind- And this is section 2, which would address that decision, but that, keep in mind, Madam Speaker, that subsequent to fiscal year 2010, any decisions made after that would have to, would only take effect in the next fiscal year. And that section 2 reads, for the purposes of fiscal year 2010, decisions made relative to adjustments by the judicial council with the fiscal year 2009 and/or subsequent but prior to the enactment of this act may be implemented upon the date of enactment of this act. So even the effective date of this provision, should it be passed into law, would not take place until such time that this is codified and adopted. So, Madam Speaker, I ask for your consideration and I ask for the consideration of our colleagues to allow this flexibility in terms of respecting the judicial council and their decisions as it applies to compensation of their personnel, and certainly a request for your support. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, are there any speakers? Senator Pangolin, any are recognized? Two hands up.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I look at this bill and then I look at the original bill. And I wanted to speak a little bit on it, of course, because during the public hearing, I asked the question. And the only question I asked was that the recommendation was that all of the judges' salaries shall be increased by the 4% or up to 4%. And they excluded the presiding judge. So I asked the question, why are you excluding the presiding judge? Is he a full-time judge on the bench? Does he take caseload? Does he work just like the other judges in terms of rotations and all that with regards to the cases? And the response was yes. And so I said, so why did you exclude him? And should he, should we not treat him so differently? And they said, you're right. We don't, we, it just wasn't discussed, and therefore, they were gonna go back, amend the bill, so that they include the presiding judge as a judge of the Superior Court of Guam. And then I see the new bill, and it comes back, and now it includes the justices of the Supreme Court. And I guess, I was reading the record there and they're kinda like using that to justify, using my question to justify the justices' salary of allowing themselves, them to get an increase, and that was never my intention. My intention in asking that question was, let's treat the trial bench judges the same. And that the justices is a different matter and should be treated differently. So I didn't want that to be misconstrued and misunderstood in my position and in the question and what has now been placed before us. I'm not responsible for that part of this bill. I just wanna be very clear. The other thing that I really have a problem with, of course, is, and, you know, I don't know, maybe I should just put the amendment in, that this should go into effect when the Hays study goes into effect. When we make the adjustments to the other hard-working employees of the judicial branch, they're saying that the financial crisis is over. It's not over, number one. And number two, you know, we're just going to widen the gap between the management and the staff at the courts. And while judges do work hard and justices do work hard, so do all the people that support them and allow them to do their job efficiently and effectively. And to just get, knowing that there is a financial crisis that continues to exist, knowing that the other employees at this time, because the process is an encompassing process, are not gonna be able to avail themselves of any increase in salary for the work that they do, but we're going to be able to find the money to give the, you know, the management, basically, the additional salaries and so forth. Because, believe me, this will get implemented immediately. When a good author said it won't go into effect until it's codified, I can guarantee you, this will be codified within 24 hours, you know. So, because they are efficient. I think even if it wasn't this, that's still codified within 24 hours. Serge does a pretty good job there, you know. He's pretty effective. He's actually, he's not. He's actually, you know, done a very good job there in terms of updating our Guam code. You go online and by the half of the year, the bills that have been passed into law have been integrated into the GCA. So they're very effective and efficient in that. But again, it's, to me, you know, we don't have a problem. The other thing is, you know, do we want to put this in that hand, in that council's hand? You know, the judicial council was put together to manage the courts and ensure that it operates efficiently and so forth. And we had a program in place that required all of these elected officials and appointed officials, that their salary structure shall be through this elected officials' compensation board. And I think that's really where we need to go in terms of making these kind of decisions because whether we like it or not, probably with, judges definitely are elected officials. Their initial appointment, seat on the bench is by appointment, but they have to run for retention. They have to run for election to be retained and stay on the bench. So they are, in effect, elected officials. The justices, of course, are not. And so forth. So, again, I'm not saying that the judges or the justices will not earn this money, but, you know, we all got a share in the burden. When the, when the 28, when the pay threat was issued in the notice by the courts because there was that financial excellency over there, and they said, employees, get ready for 32-hour work weeks. You know, those letters weren't sent to the judges or the justices that get, plan, plan your salary, plan your living expenses for a 20% cut. You know, the judges and the justices didn't get that memo because they weren't gonna be subject to that. But the employees were. And so now that we have, I don't know how they determined that the financial excellency is no longer there. I think this government is still in a very tenuous situation with regards to its financial resources. Now that that's been determined, you know, they're gonna get it first. First, they weren't gonna get cut. Now they're gonna get their pay raise first. And, you know, I can speak on this because, I tell you, I've been in this legislature for, oh, 16 years now, I think, 17 years. And I came in here with a salary that I'm still working very hard every day to earn, and it's the same salary as when I first stepped into this hall. The, and I'm not complaining, and I'm not suggesting we should get one, but we haven't gotten one because there is this elected officials' compensation board and, you know, that's where it should go. And I've, I say, that'll happen one day, hopefully, for the next guy coming in this. I'm not looking for a pay raise. My, I was talking to my brother one day about, you know, how hard it is to make ends meet as a senator, because we all hear the stories. You know, people ask for your assistance and out of the generosity of our hearts and our desire to be reelected, we make donations, you know. But we do that, and it takes money out of our pockets. And I was kinda relaying that to my brother, you know, that it's kinda gets tough, and he goes, hey, don't let me ever hear you say it's tough making it on a $55,000 a year when that guy out there that's working at GPA or working at DOA or DOC or the officer on the street is earning $24,000, struggling to pay a mortgage, struggling to raise his kids. You don't have any kids. Don't let me hear you complain how hard it is when these are the people out there doing the job, and they're not complaining, they're just working. So stop complaining and keep working. So ever since that day, I don't complain about my salary and I don't complain about making any donations. I just do what I can with what I have. But, and to come back to this, it is that, it is, they are the people out there that we have tried to assist with the Hays study, and, you know, we've told them to wait. We told them to be patient. And for those that couldn't wait or we felt that shouldn't have to wait because of the nature of their job and the need for their services in our community, like our police officers, we've made those adjustments. Like our teachers who teach our kids, we've made those adjustments. Like our police officers that protect and serve us, we've made those adjustments outside of the, of the other GovGuam agencies at the expense of those other GovGuam agencies and other GovGuam workers. We've told those guys to wait because we've determined that to protect and serve the public, we need to pay our police officers and increase their salaries. To treat our patients at the hospital, we need those nurses and we need to keep them there. And to get, teach our children, we need to give them so that they can teach our children. But the others have had to wait. And I can, I can, and I think they understand that, but we've put forth to them this promise that we've got this Hays study coming and we're going to put it in place and we're gonna struggle like hell to find the money that we need to, because the financial emergency's not there. We're not rolling in money so that once the Hays study's done, it's automatic. It's not gonna be automatic. We're going to have to make sacrifices to give any kind of additional, of any kind of pay adjustment to our hard-working GovGuam workers. And then we do something like this, that we, we even allow them to take it out of the operations budget, to cut the budget of the courts to give themselves a pay raise, which will happen because they've made that promise and they've committed to themselves that they will give, you know, the judges a pay raise. And, you know, why can't we just wait? Why can't we just wait until the Hays study gets in? They get it? Maybe, maybe the amendment here should be that, yeah, they are authorized to do this and it shall, the first raise shall be when the Hays study gets completed and the other GovGuam employees and the other employees of the court get their pay adjustment, then everybody gets adjusted. I think that would be a fairer way to do. And I don't think, I really don't think that it's a law, it's a hard struggle to make it on $125,000 a year. I just, I think it's, it's a struggle, but I'm sure they can handle it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolin. And Senator, the vice speaker, on the motion?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I think I should probably make a correction. For the trial judges, they are not at $125,000. They are at $110.
$110.
And I just, and the difference between, and I'm glad that they're at $110 because when I was elevated to the Supreme Court 12 years ago this week, the difference in salary between the trial judge and the presiding judge was $25,000. And the discrepancy just didn't make any sense, but it was as a result of that Hays study. And there was no rhyme or reason to that $25,000 discrepancy between the trial judges and the presiding judge. Even with the administr, what administrative responsibilities the presiding judge had at that time didn't justify that amount because of the benefits that were, that accrued with the, with a credit card and car and driver. So it just was not fair for the trial court judges, and they suffered. They've had that salary, the $110, which is recently implemented, I think, within the last three years, but for 17 years, it was, it was at $100,000, and it was, it was the $25,000 discrepancy. And so we're talking about seven individuals who are the trial court judges that are trying very hard, day in and day out, to try to move the cases through. And I really do think that they, they deserve an increase in their salary because there are employees in the, within the judiciary who are not judges, who actually make more than the trial court judges because of the fact that they have other, they have other positions. The head of the Public Defender Service Corporation makes more than the trial court judges. And some of the other court employees who, because of time and because of the fact that they are classified and they get their annual increments, could surpass the salaries of other trial court judges. So it, it really is way beyond past time to try to address the need to provide the trial court judges with, with their increases. And I support the, the original intent of the bill, which was to provide the trial court judges with small increments until such time as the Hays study finally just addresses this issue. The unfortunate thing, as the previous speaker mentioned, when he asked about the presiding judge, the committee thought that it was necessary to put, put that in. And when they put that, decided they were gonna include the presiding judge in having an increase, we have to also realize that the justices' salaries are pegged at the presiding judge's salary. By statute, the chief justice makes $4,000 more than the presiding judge. And so if you're going to increase the presiding judge, you know, by, by inclusion in here of the presiding, presiding judge means that also the justices of the Supreme Court, their salaries will be increased because the, the associate justices make $1,000 more and the, and the chief judge makes, chief justice makes $4 more than, than the presiding judge. And so by that one question of asking what happened to the presiding judge and including him in the legislation, perforce, the justices had to be included. So I, I'm not trying to get all their salaries up. I am only fighting for the seven trial court judges who, day in and day out, move the cases along. And I, and if we were back at the original intent of the bill, I would wholeheartedly support it. But I'm just saying that because of the fact that there was a question and there was a need to, seemingly, a request to include the presiding judge, everybody else, the presiding judge and the, and the justices had to be included in this. But if I had my way, I would just say, it would just be just the judges, at least for right now until the, until the Hays study comes out. But because those men and women work very hard trying to move cases through, and they deserve a 4% increase annually at least. I mean, because they're, as elected officials, they, they're not, they don't get the annual increments or, or service increment or meritorious increment. There's, there's no increment that's provided to them. And so I support the increase for the, for the trial court judges. I'm nonplussed about the increases for the others. I just really do think that the hard-working trial court judges need to get some increase, and I support that.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker. On the motion, are there any other speakers, Senator Rector, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, what do we, what do we do with this? Do the, do the trial court judges and all the justices of the Supreme Court deserve a 4% annual raise? Without a doubt. But you know, as my good colleague from Baragada actually mentioned as well, what about everybody else that works in that court? What about the men and women that, that protect these judges every day, that put their lives on the line, that carry a pistol, that carry a gun, that protect these guys, protect the people in the court, protect the people in the courthouse? Don't they deserve a 4% raise? What about the clerks that process the paperwork, that do all the stuff behind the scenes that nobody ever sees, that make sure that every judge has what they need so that they can do their job? Don't they deserve a 4% raise? You know, we keep doing this. We keep going and like giving raises to the best-paid people in the government, and we keep leaving the worst-paid behind. That doesn't make any sense. They can make $125,000 a year and they deserve it, I'm sure. But you know what? The guy that puts his life on the line and endangers his life by carrying a pistol, I think he deserves $125,000 a year too. Now, am I gonna get that through? Obviously not. I didn't get a $10,000 pay increase for him through. But that being said, if we're putting forth this amendment to allow the courts, the judges, to give themselves a 4% increment every year, which is more than every GovGuam employee gets, because very rapidly, GovGuam employees only get an increment every year and a half, and then every two years, whereas these guys are gonna be able to get it every year. Not a bad thing. But therefore, I would propose, and I make the following amendment, to insert the following sentence on line 8 of the first page of the bill, and all other employees of the Supreme and Superior Court. If we can give a raise to the judges, let us give a raise to everybody. Let's make it fair and just throughout the court. So henceforth, that is my motion.
I am terribly sorry. That's what happens when I'm talking to...
You mean you weren't paying attention when I was...
I know, I normally, and I do honestly, that's the truth. So please, if somebody's listening, do not come up here and bother me. I need to give my full and undivided attention to the speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So can you please repeat your amendment again?
Thank you. My motion is to insert the following words into line 8... Thank you. My motion is to insert the following words into line eight, and all other employees of the Supreme and Superior Court.
So your amendment is to add, after the Supreme Court, justices of the Supreme Court, and all other employees of the Superior and Supreme Court?
Yes.
On that amendment, are there any speakers on the amendment? Senator Agun, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I think a number of our colleagues are looking up to me and asking if, in fact, I would oppose the amendment. I think that it would shoot down the entire legislation, only because a number of us in this hallway have mentioned that there is going to be the hay study that's going to be completed, and one suggested that perhaps we should not look at an implementation date until such time that the hay study is presented to the government of Guam and adopted. And, you know, I was, I was anticipating an amendment, and perhaps it may be forthcoming as it applies to that. Madam Speaker, the reason why I'm standing up is because I ha, I do have an individual that, a wonderful individual that's employed in the courts, who I meet every single day, spend maybe 12 to 14 hours a day with her, and that is my spouse. And I do have reservations in terms of supporting this. I think I would have to state my conflict of interest, if you want to use that particular term. But in this particular case, I think that just the, the highlight during the course of the discussion, that there will be a completion of the hay study. You had an initial presentation, Madam Speaker, as well as the good Speaker of Finance, and a number of senators were there during the course of that discussion, that that hay study, which would be inclusive of personnel at the judiciary of Guam, should be completed very shortly. And that being the case, then I think that at that time, that that would provide an immediate relief to supporting the, not only the employees at the judiciary, but perhaps government-wide, once it's adopted. So I just wanted to state my conflict of interest, and I will be refraining from voting on this particular amendment. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, are there any other speakers? Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I don't think there's going to be anybody that's in this hall, or anybody in the community, that can, that should, are going to say that, that people in any job, you know, deserve, deserve a raise. But, you know, I'm sitting here, and I'm listening, and I'm just going to try, trying to wonder, I mind about the raise, where are we going to get the money? You know, and, and as the good Speaker from, from Baragada had stated, we're still trying to pay up our past debts. And, you know, I recognize, and I say this because I think that there were also discussions about, you know, legislation that's going to be introduced, or even amendments that are going to be introduced, so that although there's a fear that, say this thing was passed, that within 24 hours, it, it, it could become effective, that we've got to practice, and we've got to ensure that there's some fiscal responsibility here. And, you know, it, it's, it's, it's difficult enough already to be able to say that I am in support of this legislation prior to the submission of the, of the amendment that's being proposed now. You know, and as was stated by the earlier speaker, there's, there's a study that's being conducted, and one of the challenges that this body is going to have, once that study is completed, is how is it going to be implemented? It's, it's no secret that, you know, the salaries that we, we probably pay our people are nowhere near the salaries that are, that are, that are being made by similar positions elsewhere. But we can get into a whole discussion as to why that is, that occurs. We can get into a whole discussion as to what needs, needs to get done. But I think that we have to be honest, and we have to have those discussions, and we have to come to those realizations, before we start to say that we're comfortable in being able to, to provide, to give raises. Because I don't want to put my hand up and say, yes, I approve, and I, and that we're going to give them the raise, when we don't even have the money for it. And so, you know, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate also, also the previous speaker, and the acknowledgement of, of the conflict, and I understand that. But I have to share in his concerns, too, that this is not the time. Because I don't want to say that it's going to be done, or we're going to say that it's going to be done in paper, when we don't have the money to back it up. So, you know, with that, Madam Speaker, I, I'd like to go back, and, because it's already hard enough to be able to justify the amounts that are going to be provided to, 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 you know, to, to the judges. We need to be able to discuss that, before we even start to talk about, trying to give it to, to the employees. I hope you're not laughing at me. Okay. So, Madam Speaker, I'm, I'm just going to listen more intently, on, with regards to the discussions on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. I was reading a testimony, and I was, I was just laughing. I'm sorry, but it's not you. My apologies. On the amendment, Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, at this time, I am not prepared to support the rector amendment, and that is because I don't have the financial analysis, the financial impact, and those things, which I need. I promised my support on a separate bill for a pay adjustment for the entire judiciary employees, but not at this time. And I therefore, of course, oppose the amendment, the rector amendment. Before the amendment, the 4% on the seven trial judges and the, and the three justices, actually involve only four, are only 10 individuals, at 4% adjustments. And even if you add all of that, we can easily mentally calculate what would be the impact with respect to the resources. But if it's going to involve the entire employees, I am not prepared to support the amendment at this time. But again, I reaffirm my support for a pay adjustment for the entire judiciary on a separate bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Glenn Pobetz, Senator Palacios. Anybody else wishing to speak on the Matt, Matt Rector amendment? If not, Senator Rector, you can close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Promises, promises, promises. We've heard them for years. And yet, a promise doesn't pay your mortgage. A promise doesn't pay your power bill. A promise doesn't buy new shoes for your kids. A promise doesn't pay your cell phone bill. A promise doesn't put food on the table. You know, that's all the hard-working men and women of the, of our public structure have ever heard for the last few years. Promises, promises, promises. We deliver pay raises to the, the most well-off in our government, and yet, those that work for a living, work their butts off in the trenches, and are underpaid by half. All they get are promises. Ask the men and women that work in the port. They had all these promises given to them. Oh, we're going to put through this, this new pay study, and you're all going to get raises, and everybody's going to do good. They made them sign leave, so that they'd come down here and pay for it, and, and campaign for it, and lobby for it. Though I don't think the management signed leave, I think they just came down here on their own, because they're management. But guess what? They didn't get hardly anything. All of them that came down afterwards, came back to me and said, oh, I'm so sorry. They told us we were going to get a big raise, and yet I got a penny. Teachers, we told them, hey, we promise we're going to start paying you what you're worth, because you're valuable to us. You're important to our children, you're important to our island. You touch the hands of the future. We're going to give you a raise. And even though the CSC said it's going to be 39%, they got 14. Promises, promises, promises. Our police officers that protect each and every one of us, every single day, that put their lives on the line, take their, take time away from their families, to, to be on the road in hazardous conditions. We promised them a big pay raise. So a cop that was making $8 an hour, now makes $8.80 an hour. Woo-hoo. Oh, no, they got the other 10%, so what would that be? They got another, another 80 cents, so now they're making in the $9 an hour? Whereas if they did the same job in Los Angeles, they would be making $100,000 a year? Promises, promises, promises. Is that what we're going to do again? We're going to give promises to everybody that works at the court? We're going to say to them, well, don't worry. Let us take care of the, the wellest-paid, the best-paid, the highest-paid employees of the court, the judges and justices, and we promise that we're going to give you a raise in the future. We promise that the hay study's going to take care of you, and you're going to do all right. Just be patient. Just wait. You know, they've been waiting. They've been waiting, and they've been waiting, and they've been waiting, and they've been getting promises, and been getting promises. Isn't it time we quit giving them promises, and start giving them what they deserve? And they deserve a whole heck of a lot more than 4%. But if we're going to give judges 4%, the absolute least we can do, the absolute minimum we can do, is say we're going to give everybody else that works at the court that 4%. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator Rector. There was an objection to the Senator, Matt Rector, there was an objection to Senator Matt Rector's amendment. All those who are in favor of Senator Rector's amendment, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Senator Rector, you still have the floor. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on Bill? Senator, Speaker Panglinen, you're recognized.
I just wanted to clarify a statement I made earlier. Thanks to technology, I wanted to be very clear that when the ju, when the court issued the notice of the impending cut, that they did also send the notices to the justices and the judges, that, that they would also be cut. Although I'm going to ask them to show me that notice, but they have informed me that they did send the notice to the judges and the justices, that their salary would also be cut by 20% when the court was planning those pay cuts.
Thank you, Speaker Panglinen. Anybody else wishing to speak on the main motion on 181? If not, Speaker Wampat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as I was listening to all of the, the different comments about, the rationale, I suppose, for, you know, this salary increase for the ju, the trial judges originally, and then, then it had, they've added the presiding judge, and then now we've extended even beyond that, and to go and include now the Chief Justice, I mean, the justices. And, and what really concerns me, and even the, what the previous speaker had indicated, is that, and several speakers rather have indicated, is that when we, when we're going to talk about salary increases, you know, we don't want it to just be a, a select group of individuals. And if you recall, that when the legislature had entertained a salary adjustment and reclassification of individuals at the Port Authority, it wasn't just management, it was actually everyone, and they were able to absorb that in, in their, in their costs, and in their budget as well, and, and how they're going to be able to, to meet those increases. In, in this case, however, we're looking at the, the court system, we're not addressing any one of the, the employees. And, and instead, it's, it's going to be individuals instead, who are, in, in this particular case, judges and justices. What concerns me about this, Madam Speaker, is that there was this threat of not receiving their allotments, and that there is, there were going, the most extreme austerity measures that were going to be implemented, the, the most extreme, is to start then possibly furloughing the individual, and then the second alternative was then to start operating in a 32-hour work week. And, and we heard this for weeks, and then eventually, we know that then the, the allotments were, were released. And now then, that they're back to receiving their normal allotments, then it seems as though this might be a good time then, you know, to, to approve a 4% salary adjustment. And, and I kind of question that, because we're not on stable grounds economically. The economy hasn't turned around entirely. I called yesterday, when we have this problem right now, the threat that US DOE may not continue to give any more new or any other releases of their consolidated grant monies to DOE. And the first thought would be, does the government have to upfront now the monies for these federal programs? And when I called, the first thing that I was told by BBMR and, and DOA, is that at least when we were looking at the last quarter collections, is that we're not at the level that we've expected, you know, to bring in those monies. So we're definitely not even at the level where we would like it to be. And I don't want this, that future, in the future, that means tomorrow, or even maybe midway of the budget year, that when we run into these problems, because the monies are not coming in, then what do we do when all of these, when these salary adjustments have been made? And it's never going to be, and you know, that normally, in any institution, or any organization, when you really want to start making cuts, it's going to have to be, and I hate to use this word, but the employees, the, those that maybe they want to consider furthest from, you know, where the work needs to be done. Now, give you an example, like, take for example, the schools, where normally, when you say that we don't want to shut down the schools, we want to keep it operating, but then monies are, are not coming in, so then we go to the, the individuals, the employees, furthest away from the classrooms. And then those are the ones, then we want to, to start, to furlough. And then we keep going in, and further into that nucleus, which is in the classroom, and try to protect and preserve that, so that education will continue. By the same token, that would be the exact same thing in the courts. You want to protect the courtrooms as well, because then those- You wanna protect the courtrooms as well because then those are, the function of, of the courts must continue, but then you go out, uh, further out in parameters of that courtroom and then you may want to start again to either furlough those employees or put them in a thirty-two hour work week. And I think that that sends a very, very bad message out to the employees and for anybody. It's, I mean, take the United States right now, even President Obama is getting very upset with these companies where the top management and board members or whatever are getting, are not even cutting their salaries and yet others have lost their jobs. And, and then, and to do this at a time now, when I think is not the right time, maybe in twenty-fourteen as predicted or projecting that all these monies will come in because of the military buildup. I mean, it's like we're, we're already counting all of our, our chickens already before the eggs, you know, would actually hatch. And I think that that's a dangerous step for us to go. One other, um, concern that I have is because we passed legislation, for most of us who were here in the twenty-ninth Guam Legislature, actually now requiring, mandating that a hay study be conducted because it's been over, you know, fifteen years in which our employees has actually ever seen, you know, an adjustment in, in their salaries. And we're not talking about the annual increments, we're talking about, you know, trying to bring up our, the standard of living of, of our employees, their, their salaries, their quality of life. And yet, you know, we're doing this all on a, on a hot spot. We're doing this with one department, one agency and, and more, I, I realize with the autonomous agencies. But what happens then is that it's going to, it's gonna skew that hay study that's being done for the entire government of Guam. Because if you are a clerk in the, in the, uh, in the autonomous agencies, you're a clerk also in other agencies that are not autonomous or semi-autonomous, it doesn't matter, your responsibilities are the same. If you're an accountant in a private institution, it should be the same as an accountant as well in a public institution. And when we continue to do all this type of adjustments, then it just skews the whole study. And we were really asked, and I had invited all of my colleagues to that meeting, unfortunately there were only a handful who showed up to meet with the, with the consultant who is tasked to do the, the, um, hay study. And the only thing that they asked is that could we suspend any type of salary increases, salary adjustments, creations of new, uh, positions until such time that that salary at, study has been done, is complete. But we, we didn't even heed, you know, uh, the, the advice or the concern. We go right ahead and cater to, you know, unfortunately, yes, because we have oversight of departments and agencies and we want, yes, everyone to get a pay increase, but I don't want to skew that to the point that it, we, we end up now making other adjustments that is not a true reflection of the salary that will be commensurate to the job that is being done. So I have a very, uh, difficult time, uh, Madam Chair, with, with, I mean, Madam Speaker, with, you know, um, of, of the language, uh, in the bill and the amendments or the substituted version, uh, of the bill. And, you know, I, I'm, I continue to listen, I understand, and I heard that there may be some amendments being proffered later on and I reserve then, um, you know, my decision in terms of how I'm going to support this bill. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, um, Madam Speaker. Anybody else wishing to speak on Bill one eighty-one? Senator Espaldon, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm gonna keep this brief. I understand and I, you know, I agree with our, our colleague from PD that perhaps the judges who, uh, who I've seen at work and I've seen the caseloads, I've seen what they do and all the responsibilities that they have to tell probably do deserve some kind of increase. However, when we start taking a look at the overall picture, I think timing is the issue. I'm not really sure now is the time to start looking at, um, the wage increases or the, the increases in compensations, especially to the people in the higher up because that, you know, the judges and justices, uh, because that sends a whole message to everybody else, right? That, well, wait a minute, they can get it and other people can't. And until such time, I think that we're in a better position to address the bigger picture in terms of what the proper and appropriate compensation should be for all workers, whether you're at the top of the food chain or at the bottom of the food chain, uh, I'm not really sure how to, how to go forward with this bill in terms of my support because I do have a problem with that concept. If we all rise, we should rise together. If some, if only some get, get that and others don't, there is a disparity in, in the way we, um, in the way, in the way we share throughout this government. And so I just wanna say that to me, I think the biggest issue that I have contention with on this bill is the timing of it. And I don't think this, this is the appropriate time to start talking about raises. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Senator Espaldon. Are there any other members wishing to speak on Bill one eighty-one? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and recognize Senator Uggan to close. On the motion to move, uh, Bill one eighty-one to the voting file, if there are no objections, motion carries. Um, the next bill up is Bill one nine one. One nine one, Senator Palacios. We're gonna go ahead and take a one-minute recess.
Madam Speaker, we have enough, enough discussion that, I guess, involves money. I'd like to move that bill, uh, that this bill, what is that? Bill one ninety-one be moved to the bottom of the second reading file?
The bottom of the?
Second reading file. Be moved to the si-
To the bottom?
To the bottom of the second reading file.
On, on that motion to move, uh, Bill one nine one to the bottom of the, of the second reading file, if there are no objections?
Thank you.
Motion carries. We're gonna go ahead and, um, introduce the next bill. Right now we have Bill one nine three. Uh, Speaker Wampat, you're recognized on Bill one nine three.
One nine three? Okay. Okay, wait, wait, wait. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I don't have a, a copy of the bill, but I think-
In reference to the Mariso Pier.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. A little history, uh, Madam Speaker, is that, you know, when we, when we did the, uh, the grounds maintenance that would appropriate to all the mayors, I decided to go out to the, to the villages and meet with the mayors to talk to them, to them about how that was working and how the funds have actually helped them, uh, so much in their communities. And, and you know how it is that once they're able to, to capture our attention, uh, then you would hear other concerns as well and I, I took all that back and several of them have actually been, uh, formulated in a, in a bill. And, and in this particular case, the, the mayor of Mariso and the community of, of Mariso has actually, uh, adopted or have taken it upon themselves to, to, uh, address their, their, their own-
Madam Speaker, by may, uh, can you go ahead and move?
When I saw you, I just realized that I didn't make the motion to place it on third and I would like to discuss it. Thank you so very much.
No, so move, please proceed.
I'm so used to being down here in this other end doing this, but thank you, I, thank you for, for that. Uh, so, and, and I-
There's no objection, go, please proceed.
Okay. Uh, so, eh, so anyway, uh, the, the villagers and, and the mayor has adopted the Mariso Pier Park and it is, and they, they actually, um, take pride in what their village has to offer to not just the tourists but to the rest of Guam. Uh, it's a very scenic, uh, part of the island and they have adopted many of the recreational areas and the park areas, uh, in, in maintaining it. And they've been doing this for years without any assistance, uh, at all from, from the government. That's the pride that the people there and the mayor, you know, have about some of these particular sites. Now, the concern, however, that was brought to my attention in particular was that every year when they're going to have their Fiesta and Tasi festivities and what, and there is a need then to use the facility so that the, the people and the vendors can set up there for the, for the festivities for, uh, a week or two, that they were actually told that they have to, to not just make a deposit, uh, to use the facility, but would have to pay to use the facility. And that was an insult to them when they in fact have been taking care of the, of this particular park for years. And, and, and they feel that when you empower the people, uh, in the village and the mayor in particular in his office to take care of these parks, that they have pride in these parks, that they would do a very good job of it. And it's not going to be always on the availability of, of funding, but more because this is, you know, the pride that they have and that it's not the money. But they would definitely like to have jurisdiction, uh, of, of, of that park, administrative jurisdiction of, uh, that particular park, the Mariso Pier. And the mayors as a whole has actually, have actually, uh, prepared a resolution in support of this. And you're beginning to see this, Madam Speaker or Mr. Speaker, that, uh, the, the people in the village, in the villages are, really have so much pride about the different facilities and recreational facilities and parks and all that, uh, their schools, just anything in their village, they have that pride. And, and I think that that is something that every one of us would love to have, is when people have that pride, then we're go, starting to start to see a change in every community. You're going to see a, a reduction of graffiti, a reduction of, uh, damages, uh, you know, to, to any of the, of the villages, whether it be parks, public parks or even private homes because they would know, they know everybody that's in their, their village and they're gonna take pride in this and they're gonna hold everyone accountable to trying to deface or destroy, you know, their villages. And I think that, uh, we're starting, because we're starting to see that more mayors are actually voicing now a concern after one is taking care now of their own schools, they've been doing this without, uh, any, uh, support, financial support, now they have that. Here we are now talking about their parks as well and they have monies that has been appropriated to them from the, the, um, uh, streetlight funds and, and they've been very resourceful. So I, you know, uh, offer this to, to our colleagues for their, you know, uh, positive consideration in, in supporting this. I, I will not, uh, you know, lie to you in any way by letting you know that the director of Parks and Rec, uh, would prefer to try to keep as many of the parks within their own jurisdiction. And I guess maybe the fear is, is that when you start to take them away, then maybe there might eventually not be a need for a Department of Parks and Rec. And, and that's not, uh, the case at all because they, they do realize, uh, the, their capabilities, their, the potential, the resources and all that to, to be able to handle all the parks in the island. And you know that there are still seventy parks that are still within the jurisdiction of, uh, the Department of Parks and Recreation. So, uh, in, in reviewing maybe, uh, the committee report, then you have a, a better idea in terms of what the testimony's been like. There is a support from the entire mayor's council, there's a support from the, um, the, the municipal planning council and the mayor of Melazo, but there's definitely, uh, some concern from the, the director of the Department of Parks and Rec. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Governor. Senator Ty DeGruy.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I stand in full support of this and, and very honored that I am co-sponsor of this bill. As you know, I'm from the village of Inarahan and many of my relatives are in Mariso. And the people there in the south, um, are amazing. They're hospitable, they open their doors to everyone, they ensure that the place that, when you come to their village, that it's, it's clean, it's done right. And the mayor himself, Mayor Charlof, is an amazing man. This man keeps to his word. He has a heart of gold. And as the good speaker had mentioned, um, all the angles around this, this whole entire bill and how it was formulated and, and through, uh, the public hearing, um, there was the mayor's endorsement. All mayors endorsed this process to be given to the, uh, to the mayor of Mariso. He has done things already out of his own pocket, out of his own budget. He has already done disposal of trash, painting the pavilions, providing water service to all the pavilions, uh, inclusive of installing the showerheads on his own. And he, he will continue to do this, even if it, even if it doesn't go to him. He will continue to do this. But that's not right, it's not fair to be asked to pay every time they wanna use a facility. I stand in full support and hope that my colleagues too can see that this village has done everything possible to make it nice for its people and for the tourists that come there and to at least do justice and give it to the mayor of Mariso. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Ty DeGruy. Senator Tina Munya Barnes.
Si doso, ma'asim, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak briefly on this bill, uh, one ninety-three. Mr. Speaker, I, I just want to stand in, in full support of Bill one ninety-three and I'd like to thank the author of this legislation for letting me be one of her co-sponsors. Um, Mr. Speaker, there's no, there's, um, no secret that I've known the mayor of, uh, Mariso for more than, I'd like to say for more than twenty-seven years of my life as we worked together at the Public Defender's Office for over, um, fifteen years, um, working closely together on projects and cases that, that we were involved with at the Public Defender's Office, but now that he wears a different hat, Mr. Speaker, I want you to know that Mayor Charlof walked into that public hearing room, spoke passionately about the desire of wanting to have this, uh, park, Mariso Pier Park, put under the jurisdiction of his village, not just for sentimental reasons, not just for making sure that it was fixed. He also mentioned from the heart that it meant so much to him, not just as a mayor, but to him as a resident of Melazo, to him having been involved and working closely with, with the pier and, and literally at that pier- with the pier and literally at that pier almost every day of his life, having done many activities down there, and said, "This park was so special that it literally belonged to the people of Malaso." And you know what was even more interesting, Mr. Speaker, was he said, "I don't even want funding for it." And I said, I almost said, "Mayor, very, very bold and humble remark, but you know, it's noble of you to say you want to have that park in your village for all the Mariso residents to help take care of it, and your willingness to say that you have five dedicated hard workers to work with you on that pier." But even at that, and even recognizing that, you know, even with the statement saying, "I don't need the funding because I'm with all the people in the village of Malaso that we're going to work together to upkeep, uphold, and just bring the dignity of the utilization of that pier for everybody in Mariso," that that was just important enough for them to have it. I really appreciated his words, and anybody who knows Mayor Charagla from Malaso and his strong commitment for getting things done, and literally, his word being as good as gold, that commitment of pride, that commitment of dignity, that commitment of unselfishness for wanting to take care of that, I hold that dear to me, Mr. Speaker, and I really support this effort. And if the residents of Mariso and the village, Malaso Municipal Planning Council, the mayors from the Mayor's Council, and the mayor himself from Malaso want it, then let's give him that opportunity to own it, to have ownership of it, to work with it, and do what it needs to take to refurbish it, to fix it and all that. And, Mr. Speaker, even knowing that he said he didn't even want any funds, we know that that may not be possible, but just knowing that desire for them to have, Malaso residents have the ownership of it, I think that's a responsible thing to do. And having that commitment from the mayor to saying that he will take full responsibility, I want to afford him that opportunity. So, Mr. Speaker, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this legislation. I thank the speaker for being a part of this sponsorship. And I ask my fellow colleagues to please support the desire of Mayor Ernest Charagla, the municipal, the Malaso Municipal Planning Council, and the residents of Mariso for really wanting to take this park under their ownership. Si dos masi.
Thank you very much, Senator Munya Barnes. The next speaker is Senator Frank Uggan. Otherwise, I'll call Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, Senator Adda, and then Senator Uggan.
Si dos masi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand in support of this legislation, and I'd like to tell you why and tell the people of Guam why by telling a short story here. There's a man who lives in the south, and he looked at his neighbor's house, and he saw that his neighbor's house had all these things in the yard and people gathered around the yard. But he saw that in the yard, and of course, the house was next to the beach, and these people gather in the yard, and they go swimming, they come out of the ocean, they want to rinse off, and there's only one faucet in the yard. So everybody lines up and waits and waits. And he says, "Hey, maybe if I tell my neighbor that, you know what? People like your house, they love your yard, but they love to go swimming and relax, but every time they come to your house and your yard, there's a huge line. Maybe we should put like maybe three more faucets or three more showers so that these people can enjoy it, because you know, your house is open to the public." And he tells this, and he asks, and he's told, "Oh, no, I don't have any money to do any of that." Goes, "Can I do it?" "Oh, no, no, you know, that's my house." "Yeah, but it's my people that are waiting in line, and I just want to kind of give them something." And he goes, "No, no, 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 that's not your house." So what does he do? He waits. Then he looks and he goes, "You know, there's these really nice shelters in your yard, and it's supposed to keep out the wind and the rain, but you know, the way they put it up..." Because the way that the shelters are put, when it's raining, you have to stand outside the shelter when the wind blows so that you don't get wet. You can't stand in the shelter to get out of the rain. So maybe we should put like an awning so that when the wind blows, the awning catches the rain. So, "Can I do that? Because these people keep getting wet in the rain." I said, "No, no, no, you cannot do that." "Why not?" "Well, you know, it's my house, my yard." "Yeah, but I can help you, people will enjoy it, they'll love you." "Yeah, but you know, we don't have any money." Says, "But I can do it." "No, no, no, no." Says, "It's okay, it's okay." And he goes, so he goes like, "Hey, how about painting, man? Maybe I don't have to change anything, can I just paint the thing?" And he goes, "Oh, no, nah, we can't decide what color." This guy, just like, all he wants to do is fix the place up. Then he gets elected, and he wanted, and he says, "I want to do it now." Says, "But maybe I shouldn't do it now because, you know, I'm running for mayor and people will think like, oh, he's just doing this for a campaign." So he waits, and he gets elected, and he says, "You know what? Think I'm going to sneak over there in the middle of the night and just put those water lines in." And that's what he did. Put in the water lines, took the money out of his own pocket, and everybody is happy, they can rinse off, they don't have to wait. Says, "You know what? Maybe the guy won't notice I painted his pavilions." So he paints it anyway, and everybody's like nice and happy. This is what we have in this case. We have this mayor who's taking care of the neighbor's house. Can we imagine what he would do if we give it to him so that it becomes his house? Can you imagine the improvement and the pride? He's so proud just because the house is located in his village that he's doing all this out of his pocket and what he can support. But if we say, "Okay, you can manage this thing now." He does all this, and then he asks, "You know, we're going to have a big party for the entire island, and we're going to invite the entire island, so can we use your house to hold the party because everybody comes down here?" And he said, "Yeah, but you have to pay me $1,000." "But wait a minute, I just painted it, I cut the grass, I put in new pipes and new water." "Yeah, you know, but it costs $1,000. And by the way, you have to clean it again." He goes, "What do you mean, clean it again? I'm the only one who cleans it." "Yeah, but you still have to pay $1,000." So now they want to charge him rent. It just doesn't make sense. In this case, I think, we have somebody who's willing to do the job, who's willing to go outside of the resources that he has because of the pride that they have in their village to keep this house nice, clean, and open to the public. And it just makes sense that he's going to do it because we know that even when he doesn't own it, he does it. What more when we give it to him? And he has promised, and I know somebody said promises, promises, but this guy keeps his promise, he has promised to keep it open to every one of us who wants to come down and visit. And it has always been, and it will always be. So nothing's going to change with regards to this park, this house, except it's going to be nicer, it's going to be cleaner, it's going to be more user-friendly, because that's what has occurred, even when he doesn't control it, just so that the people can enjoy it. And I hope it's one of the best places to watch a sunset, too, that I can go down there with a bottle of beer and watch that sunset and only have one beer. Thank you.
Slants it on the pier and not in the car. As a commercial, everybody is invited down to Fiesta and Tasi. I went down last weekend, it was wonderful. He actually was the head, and then Senator Adda.
Thank you very much. Buenas, buenas en oferté, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, and I want to commend, first of all, the acting governor for this particular legislation, lo calangoa po blemah guine. So it addresses Malaso, the taiguina ani tautau sol guine. See, oh, good. But I was going to propose that, in fact, my name incorporated this, but I think in the end process, Mr. Speaker, it will, but will be down the road. But just a couple of things. I think that, first of all, I stand in complete support of this particular measure. Many years back, I believe it was four, that's many to me in my category, four or five years ago, there was a particular legislation that was endorsed by members of this body that would have transferred a particular baseball facility right adjacent or in front of the Baza Gardens Winter Hills area. And you know, Mr. Speaker, I think that that was perhaps one of the greatest gifts to the mayor of Jordan at that time and the people of that particular community and in that surrounding area, only because that facility was not being adequately maintained. I'm not going to disregard the efforts of Parks and Recs and all of their personnel because, Mr. Speaker, when you're responsible for 70 parks and you have limited personnel resources and limited budgets, then obviously you need to prioritize. But when this body adopted that proposal and gave the maintenance and the upkeep of that baseball field, practically every baseball season, it's used regularly. And that was the ultimate intent of that legislative measure and transferring that public park facility, baseball park, over to the mayor of Jordan. And I think that I need to extend kudos to Mayor Talahi and all of his personnel because they really have maintained that baseball park extremely well, and it is being used extensively by the community. Just a couple of amendments or one amendment, Mr. Speaker, if I may propose, because on line 12 and 13, it's a section two transfer of property, and then it reads, "It is the intent of leasing to Nguanhan." I would like to propose an amendment, and I did consult very briefly with acting governor Wampad in this case, to delete the words, "It is the intent of," and to, on line 13, delete the word "to" and then insert the word "hereby." So it would read, Mr. Speaker, "Ilhe his antu Nguanhan hereby," and then add an S after "transfer," it transfers the Maritzo Pier Park from the administrative jurisdiction of Parks and Rec over to the Malaso Mayor's Office. So it would read that way, and I think in this particular case, it would be clear that the allowance and the transfer will take place within the 120 days as required by that particular section. So, Mr. Speaker, if I can propose that amendment and then I continue my statements. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
No objection. No objection. Sorted.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, there's another component about the use of public facilities and parks that are administered by Mayor's Council. In some cases, when a private business or enterprise, not necessarily a nonprofit organization, not necessarily a baseball team or a basketball team wants to use a public facility within the jurisdiction of the mayors, but when it comes to a private interest, there are opportunities for the mayors to generate revenues, to be able to charge for the use of that facility, and then ultimately use those revenues to reinvest towards the maintenance and the upkeep and the upgrade of that particular facility. So I guess the one question I have is, by virtue of transferring the administrative jurisdiction of this particular park, would the mayor of Malaso also have that option available to him? I mean, if it's already in the code, then it's fine, I just have that one particular issue because I'm sure the mayor may come back to this body and say, "By the way, you gave me jurisdiction, but you didn't give me flexibility to allow for the assessment of fees for private entities."
Does anybody wish to yield to that question?
Okay, Mr. Speaker, I'll yield to the next speaker, Senator from the village of Mariso bordering Baragada. So I guess he would address this particular concern. I am sorry, my nilau, I stand corrected, my nilau bordering Baragada. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Si dos masi.
Thank you. Senator Adda and Senator Calvo.
Mr. Speaker, my, first of all, I rise in support of the bill. I've always been impressed with the village of Mariso as I drive through. I recently had the opportunity to conduct a public hearing in the evening recently, and I was certainly impressed with their community center facility there, and of course, their pier facility is always an impressive place to drive by. I would like to make an amendment to the bill, though. In section three there on page two, it says that the mayor of Marizo is responsible for the Marizo Park, but it is not clear if, in fact, then the authority to be able to assign the use of that facility, you know, on a first come, first served basis or however the procedure is that is currently used by Department of Parks and Recs. And I believe there are established fees that Parks and Recs right now assesses a security deposit and whatnot. So I would like to proffer the amendment, and I don't have copies made out yet, but if I can read it, and it's a simple one, it would read then, "To add at the end of line seven the following sentence." This is on page two of section three. It reads, "The authority for allowing use of the facility and assessment of authorized fees as currently exercised by the Department of Parks and Recreation shall be made a part of the granting of this responsibility." So all it says is, whatever administrative procedures the Department of Parks and Recs uses, now that transfers to the mayor of Marizo.
On the amendment, any objections to the amendment? Objection? Senator Uggan? No objection? Oh, wait, Senator Espaldón, do I... Senator Calvo, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment, and actually, that was the reason why I raised my hand a little bit earlier to speak on this matter. But my issue, first of all, I'm for the bill, and I believe that the mayor and the municipal council would be the right parties to have responsibility to ensure the upkeep of this facility. But my concern, again, has been that there have been new upgrades to the Maritzo Pier Park, and with that, what I was concerned is that if you're going to give them responsibility, you need to give them the resources to ensure that the responsibilities that have been given to them, they'll have the means to upkeep the facility. But now I'm hoping that with that amendment that has been just proffered, that it will allow for the necessary resources in order for the upkeep of the facility. I don't know in detail what those fees are and whether they would be adequate, but at least with these type of language in place, there would be some revenues derived from the use of that facility and hopefully adequate revenues to provide quality services in that particular area. Again, so I rise in support of the measure, and of course, the question I had, I'm hopeful that that would be adequate resources so that the mayor can do his job in the upkeep of the facility. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Calvo. Would the chairman of parks wish to yield to that question?
I'll try, Speaker Cruz. With the inquiry from Senator Calvo, right now, the Department of Administration does have a policy in place when it comes to fees of their parks and deposits thereof, and then there's a return of almost the majority of the portions, but there is a little fee assessed when parks are utilized. So I think the amendment from Senator Adda may be appropriate, will be appropriate to address.
Senator Espaldón, you have...
Just a point of information, and again, this is one of the issues that I was addressing with the author of this amendment, was that...
with the author of this amendment, was that if we were going to transfer this park over to the Mayor's Office, does the rule, do the rules of Parks and Rec allow for a waiving of any fees? In other words, if it's gonna fall within his jurisdiction, I mean, I'm sure there could be some local events in which they would not want to have to charge any fees.
Yes, yes, there is provisions in place for that also, especially when it comes to youth activities and senior citizen activities. Yes, there are rules and regulations already in place with the Department of Parks and Recs when it comes to that. That is also law.
If we're transferring this to the municipality of Mariso, shouldn't we just leave this with the Municipal Planning Council?
There is a, there is, the author of the amendment is working to add on to his amendment.
Senator Blas?
In that case, maybe since this amendment's still...
Let's just take a few minutes.
Let's take a few minutes, like an hour and a half.
Let's recess until 2:00.
Thank you.
Thank you, the legislature's back in session. The next bill on the agenda is Bill 196. Senator... Oh, I'm sorry, we had that one last amendment on 193. There's a new amendment by Senator Adda that's being circulated. Please proceed, Senator Adda.
Mr. Speaker, this amendment that's being circulated now was actually, we put together amendments that I've come up with, Senator Pangolinan and Senator Frank Uggan. They're real simple amendments. And the first amendment is on page 1, Section 2, which simply changes the title of Section 2 from "Transfer of Property," and instead it should read "Transfer of Administrative The second amendment, under the same section, is on page 2, line 2, where it changes the word, where it reads "Transfer of Said Property Shall Become Effective," it should read "Transfer of Said Administrative Jurisdiction." So we delete the word "property" and insert the phrase "Administrative Jurisdiction."
Can we deal with those two first?
Yes.
Do you want to explain it?
I'm gonna go ahead and defer to Senator Pangolinan, who actually was the one that wanted to make that amendment.
Will you withdraw your previous amendment first?
Yes, 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 I withdraw the earlier amendment.
Okay, thank you. It's withdrawn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the amendment was to accurately reflect that the property itself is not being transferred to the office of the mayor or the Village of Malessu, just the authority over the administration of the property. So we're not transferring title or ownership or anything of that nature, so the property's not being transferred. It's a control over the property which has been placed, which has been defined in law as the administrative jurisdiction. So it's to make it consistent with what was done in an earlier amendment.
Does everybody understand the first two amendments that are being proposed? Does anybody have any objection to the two amendments?
No.
Going once, twice? Senator Adda, the third amendment?
The third amendment, Mr. Speaker, is to add the following sentence at the end of Section 3, page, on page 2, starting at line 7 there, so after the word "park," it should, we should add the sentence, "The authority for allowing the use of the facility and assessment of authorized fees as currently exercised by the Department of Parks and Recreation shall be made a part of the granting of this responsibility. In the interim until such," oh, comma, "in the interim until such time that the mayor, through the AAA process, formulates its own policy." So in other words, whatever it is that the Department of Recs is, the procedures that they're following, the mayor then will continue to follow that until he formulates his own policy and goes through AAA process.
Is that a typo, that the I in N is capitalized?
That should be a small case, so that then it's "Granting of this responsibility," comma, and we really should remove the asterisk, call, that, do that.
The quotation mark.
Quotation, the right quotation mark. So it should read, "Granting of this responsibility," comma, or, made a part of the, "Granting of this responsibility," comma, "in the interim until such time that the mayor, through the AAA process, formulates its own policy." Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we remove both quotation marks?
Yes.
And make the I, capital I, a lowercase?
Small i, yes.
Does everybody understand the amendment? Does anybody wish to speak on the amendment? Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I just want to thank the mover of the amendment for incorporating and allowing some flexibility on the part of the mayor. Should the mayor decide that perhaps some of the existing use, provisions for the use and assessment of fees are insufficient to meet the requirements, or he would like to amend it, at least the added language, "in the interim until such time the mayor, through the AAA process, formulates its own policy," would allow for that flexibility, so that, in fact, you empower the mayor to be able to formulate policies that he or she, in this case, he, but in this, but as it applies generally, he or she, whoever the mayor is, would have that flexibility to be able to adopt and formulate their policy that they feel is appropriate for their respective villages and for their constituents. So I thank the good mover of the amendment, and I certainly stand in support of it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Any other speakers on the amendment? Any objection to the amendment? Thank you. Are there any other speakers on the bill? Any further amendments? Senator Calvo, is Senator Calvo here, or did he already? Yes, he had asked to be the next speaker. He's waived his comment. All right, thank you. Then, if there's no further speakers on the bill and no amendments to be made, we'll close. Oh, you have an amendment?
I'm closing for Senator...
Yes, I know.
...Wanpat. Oh, okay. With an amendment.
Well, then, go ahead. You're recognized.
Thank you, Speaker Cruz, for giving me the opportunity to close on behalf of the good Speaker Wanpat. In reference to this, I'd like to extend my ndunkulunusidusmasi to all the senators who chimed in in support of placing this Mariso Pier Park under the administrative jurisdiction of the Mariso Mayor. I know that you will be elated to know that it's gonna receive its support on this bill, but I do have an amendment that was proffered by the good speaker and myself, and I'm just gonna go ahead and read it for the record, Mr. Speaker. I think it was passed out, and it has JTWP slash Barnes, and the proposed amendment would be, at, I guess...
Legal counsel will find a place for it.
A new section. "If the mayor is unable to maintain the park, he shall notify the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation in writing, and maintenance of the park shall revert to the Department of Parks and Recreation." I'd like to just briefly speak on this. Mr. Speaker, when we had the public hearing, it was brought to the attention that the Department of, the Director of Department of Parks and Recreation was saying that in the past, there were some villages who had, in the past, ascertained some parks within their villages, took care of it, and then when the transition came along, the new mayors did not want to have that responsibility, because for whatever reason, it being overburdensome, or they just didn't have the capabilities or the resources to maintain the park, they wanted it reverted back to the Department of Parks and Recreation. So to address that concern, this amendment was proffered, and I'm hoping that my colleagues give it consideration.
Respechial, then Senator Palacios.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Now, I understand what the amendment is attempting to do, but the concern, the issue I have is, we have a bill here that seeks to codify something, and the codification reads, "The Mayor of Mariso is responsible for the Mariso Pier Park," and then we have an amendment that simply says, "If the mayor is unable to maintain the park, he simply notifies the Director of Parks and Recs in writing, and that the park shall revert back to the Department of Parks and Recreation." Are we just talking about the administrative jurisdiction or the maintenance? Because the whole intent is to give the mayor the administrative jurisdiction over the park, so that they'll be able to, they'll be responsible for maintaining it. And so how can someone put something in writing, amend the law? That's the problem I have with the mechanics of this amendment. I don't, I rise in objection for that very reason.
Mr. Speaker, if I may, just based on that, I'd go ahead and withdraw that amendment.
There being no objection to withdrawing?
Again, Mr. Speaker, if I may, I just want to thank again everybody for giving, for working and strengthening this bill, and I ask that it be moved to the voting file.
Any objection to moving Bill 193 to voting file? The next bill on the agenda is Bill 196. Senator Money Barnes.
Sismasi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill Number 196-30COR, as substituted by the Committee on Municipal Affairs Aviation Housing and Recreation. They move to the third reading file, and I'll briefly speak on it.
Please.
Sismasi, tatlu, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the intent of this bill is, and the reason for this bill is to clearly recognize that our village mayors are as the direct administrative representatives of our people. This legislation, 196, will allow our mayors to conduct the affairs of serving our people in the village level, and as you know, Mr. Speaker, our mayors are duly elected, just like us, and must be empowered further to carry out the duties and responsibilities within their village level. For me...
196.
Yes, it is. It's been passed out.
We'll take a minute for...
Mr. Speaker, if I may, now that we have the Sergeant of Arms that are going out and is making copies of the bill that they say wasn't received, can we go ahead then and just move to Bill 198 and then come back to 196?
It's fine.
This is, thank you again, Mr. Speaker. This, the intent of Bill 198 is to, an act to amend 12 GCA, Chapter 5, Subsection F, relative to the compensation for Commissioners of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority. This bill says, specifically states that the Gura is probably one of the only government entities that does not compensate their Board of Directors for official meetings that they attend. As Oversight Chair on Housing, I want to assure that the Board of Directors of the Guam Housing Urban Renewal Authority be authorized to receive a very minimal compensation for their services to the people of Guam. The officials of Gura had advised me that when they were, when authorized by public law, the authority may seek federal funds to pay for the stipends of the directors, but nevertheless, I want to make it certain that they're afforded the same benefits as other members of boards and commissions in this government. And if I may, Mr. Speaker, the Commissioners, I'd like to make one minor amendment, and if I can, it says on page 2, Section 2, Subitem F, the one that's underlined, "Commissioners may be paid a reasonable per diem not to exceed $50 for their attendance at an official meeting of the commission at the request of several of the members," knowing that this is coming from federal funds and that they meet, was, "Have it not exceed that per diem from $50 to $100 a month." So I make that first amendment.
Does everyone...
Not to exceed $100.
Does everybody understand the amendment? It's to strike $50 and have not more than $100 a month?
No, no, no. It's $50 per meeting. Not to exceed $100 a month, right?
Right.
The very last line.
Before Section 3, the underscore?
No, that says per diem.
Per diem not to exceed $50 or $100 a month.
A month.
Mr. Speaker, can we take like a one-minute recess, so we can be consistent with other provisions of law that are already provided for this?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Legislature is back in session. Senator Uggan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just in an effort to, as suggested by our legal counsel to save a few trees, Mr. Speaker, the provision that I'd like to propose is that we delete the underlined portion in Section 2 and replace it with the following language. And FYI, for the information of members of the body, Mr. Speaker, this is originating from the Uniform Compensation for Boards and Commission provision. It would read, "Commissioners shall be compensated in the amount of $50 for attending a board meeting, comma, such compensation not to exceed $100 per month." So it would be consistent with the existing provision in law. So it would read, once again, Mr. Speaker, if I may, Commissioners shall be compensated in the amount of $50 for attending a board meeting, such compensation not to exceed $100 per month. So if there are two board meetings, obviously, they'll be compensated for each meeting. If there's one board meeting, they will only be compensated $50. And if they don't show up, they will not be compensated.
And if there are four, there's still only 100. Okay, does everybody understand the amendment?
So it's only to replace the underlined portion, Mr. Speaker. Okay? It's not to replace the entire section.
I understand. Does everybody else understand that? No, he only substituted them. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this amendment? Is there any objection to the amendment? Move it down.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker...
I'm sorry, Senator Palacios had his hand up. Oh, okay. He wants to speak on the bill, yeah. Senator Palacios, please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, of course, I support the, this bill, Bill 198. But I would like to bring to the attention of this body that, for example, the territorial parole board, they don't, they don't receive stipend. Why? Because I think there was a law at one time during the austerity program of about eight years ago, when all these things have been suspended and have not yet been restored. Also, the Alcoholics Beverage Commission Board, I know that they're not, even though the law is not repealed, they're still under that moratorium policy. And including, of course, the GURA Commissioners. But with this bill, if this is to reestablish the entitlement for compensation for, of course, for services for attendance, then the implication of this, of course, would lead to, how about the territorial parole board? The ABC Board? I don't know about the appeals board, the contractors licensing board. I think it's easier to count how many boards do receive compensation. I know the PUC, and that's, of course, by statute, the CCU, the Civil Service Commission, the school board. I don't know about the Board of Regents. I'm not sure. The point is, there are more boards that do not receive than there are boards that receive stipend. And that's my comment about this. But I do support, at least, if nothing else, this would be the beginning of the restoration for the rest of the board. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Panglinen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I certainly understand the bill and its intent. One of the features, of course, of this is that GURA is 100% federally funded, so it doesn't affect the general fund. However, we did try to make as much as possible a restoration of the ability to make payment on these boards and commissions. There was a provision in the budget bill that allowed the departments and agencies to pay the board stipends from their operating costs. So if they had, if they're able to transfer money and, or transfer the appropriations, they could, from their current operational appropriation, pay boards and commissions for the meeting. So they have the ability to do so. There was no direct appropriation because of the continual nature of our financial situation. But they do have the ability to pay if they, if they can find it within the operating budgets.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Anybody else wish to be heard on the bill? If not, Senator Moni Barnes, you may close or move it down.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to thank the previous speaker from Baragada for making that clarification and making it a realization that, yes, it was put on the last budget bill, Public Law 30-55, and that we just wanted to make sure, nevertheless, that we want to be certain that the GURA Commissioners were also afforded that same benefit. So I'd like to move the bill to the, down to third for voting.
Any objection? Hearing none.
Voting five.
Yeah.
Yeah. Third voting file.
Voting five.
No objection.
We're back on 196. Has everybody received their copy? I think we got more than the copy. We actually got the committee report now. Senator Moni Barnes.
Sidozmasi, again, Mr. Speaker, I will state that Bill 196 is a bill to, is a move to clearly recognize our village mayors...
Do you want to move the substituted bill or accept the substituted bill?
I did.
Well, I know, we were, we went by...
It was accepted by the rules, but again, I'll move, I'll move as substituted by the Committee on Municipal Affairs Aviation Housing and Recreation down to the third reading. And again, briefly speak on it.
Please.
Again, this bill is to clearly recognize our village mayors as the direct administrative representatives of our people. This legislation will allow our mayors to conduct the affairs of serving our people in the village level, Mr. Speaker. I will reiterate that our mayors are duly elected officials, and we must empower, have them be empowered further to carry out their duties and responsibilities. I believe that this legislation will enable our mayors to conduct activities within their village for the direct benefit of the residents in their jurisdiction. Mr. Speaker, as an oversight of this committee, I will again expound the fact that our mayors continue to be the number-one responders to anything and everything that happens, happens within their village. Whether rain or shine, morning or night, whether it be a very minor situation to the most difficult and probably even in domestic-related matters, the first people that are called, sometimes even before any other government agency, are their mayors. From directing traffic on the streets to making sure our kids are placed safely in the schools and helping out, to from grass cutting to just, just anything imaginable that you can think of, our mayors are there. And you know, as each time we talk about the mayors, we look at resources and trying to fund them, the adequate resources that they need for their, each mayor for their villages. And you know what? Some mayors are able to work with what they have, and the majority of the mayors are saying, you know what? It, we really, even if we scrutinize, even if we conserve, even if, there's just not any, enough money to go around. We want to implement programs, but we can't because, as in everything else, resources is the issue. Money is the issue. And again, this is a way that we can empower our mayors to give them that authority to work within their villages, to promote the activities, to bring economic diversity into their communities so that they can be able to work the programs that they need within their village. So I'm going to ask that my colleagues, please, find it in your hearts to give a favorable vote on Bill 196. And I really hope that they support this bill. Sidozmasi, and thank you.
Senator Uggan. Any others wish to be heard on this bill? After Senator Uggan, anybody else?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly stand in full support of this legislative proposal, Bill Number 196. I think as it reads, to recognizing village mayors as the direct administrative representative of our people, I think it really, really speaks well for itself in terms of recognizing the mayors and empowering them. But before I continue with my statements, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to just recognize that we do have several members of the Mayor's Council of Guam, inclusive of the President, Mayor Karatayama, who's in the audience, Mayor Jesse Gogui, Mayor Peter Tulahe, Vice Mayor Robert Hoffman, who's in the audience. Also, we do have the Mayor of Fogatna, Mr. Juan Uggan Cruz, and also the Mayor Dean Sanchez of Omatac, and then the Mayor, Mr. Chaglov of Melesu, who are in the public hearing room, listening to some of our comments. I want to recognize them and thank them for being here to perhaps listen to some of the comments and the eventual results of this particular discussion. Yes, I did mention Mayor Peter Tulahe, but it doesn't hurt to mention him twice again only because, obviously, he's from my village. One of the senators just said I may have missed him, but I know Mayor Peter Tulahe recognized that I did not miss his name initially. But, Mr. Speaker, I stand in full support of this. I think that it's more or less allowing the mayors the opportunity to be able to conduct their own activities and to be recognized for that and giving that authority. A couple of things that I would like to propose, Mrs. Speaker, as amendments, if I can ask you to follow through with me and perhaps we can deal with them on an individual basis. On line number 20 on page 2, to delete the word "special." I don't consider this special. I think I consider it an appropriate authority to be granted to the mayors. It would read, "Individual mayors are granted authority to approve," and they continue on with that statement rather than saying it's a special authority because really, it's more or less empowering the mayors. I'd like to move for that, Mr. Speaker. And then also, I don't know if you want to deal with this individually or I'm trying to save a tree and stay green, so...
Let's just deal with the "special" first. Any objection to the deletion of "special"?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, senators. Also, on line nine, on line nine, after the word "activity," I think that one of the things we need to do is ensure that not only is the certificate approved and affixed with the mayor's signature or the vice mayor, if in fact it's appropriate, but I think we also need to require that, in fact, it be properly and visibly displayed in their facility. So I would propose that after the word "activity," you insert a comma and the following statement, "and shall be visibly displayed in the concession facility." Because we don't know if it's going to be a booth. We don't know if it's going to be just an outright table. So it would be, it would read on line number nine, "After activity, I would like to move for the insertion of the following language, comma, 'and shall be visibly displayed in the concession facility.'"
There's two activities on line nine.
Oh, my apologies. After the first activity word.
Thank you.
To conclude, to continue with that particular statement.
Everybody understand the amendment by Senator Uggan?
Once again, after the, I apologize, and thank you for that correction. "After the first word 'activity,' to insert the following comma, 'and shall be visibly displayed in the concession facility.'" It's on the...
Page three, line nine.
Page three, line nine. And in addition to receiving the certificate, there are some questions being raised about why would we have, would we have to do this? If you notice, Mr. Speaker, that any time a health certificate is being granted or an authorization, in most cases, you not only have the health certificate, but you also have the business license visibly displayed in some of these facilities. And I think that if, in fact, this certificate is provided, it would be appropriate for it to be visibly displayed in the concession stand. So... So that's the amendment, and that's the rationale behind it, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Telotide agree?
I just have a question for the author of the amendment. When you put down a certificate approval fixed with approving mayor's signature shall constitute the official authorization of the concessionary activity. Now, when you're talking, you were just talking about health, you know, getting approval from that, from Department of Public Health, things like that. It just says that the mayor can sign off on any kind of health thing... like that. It just says that the mayor can sign off on any kind of health thing. So that's why I'm not sure.
Mr. Speaker, did you want me to respond?
Please.
Please, if you would yield.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Senator Taitiwi. In this particular case, it's already a requirement that any health certificate and business license be visibly displayed in the businesses, establishments. What this would refer directly to is a certificate that is signed by the mayor that outlines the authorization provided on what type of activity, and it also outlines the timeframe, which is not to exceed 60 days. So that particular certificate with the mayor's signature would be affixed on the concession facility.
Okay. So then I guess the question will then arise, what is certificate of approval? And I guess that can be addressed later on, Mr. Speaker, so I'll just wait until that time comes to do the definition for certificate approval. I don't know what that is. But now I understand, this is basically not for health purposes, but just rather that the mayor agrees to have this on. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Are there any other speakers on the bill?
Wait, wait, he wants to.
Wait, we haven't dealt with your amendment, have we?
No.
No, he, on that activity one. Does everybody understand the amendment?
Yes.
Any objection? Oh, Senator Ada, on the amendment.
Based on Senator Taitiwi's request for clarification there, I think if we went up to like line four and actually started, it actually starts from there, and it appears that the authority that we're talking about is the authority for the handling of consumables at these concessionary activities. And so we're really talking about a sanitary permit, isn't it? Well, then, if we just start at line seven, then yes, then you could say that this certificate of approval is the mayor's approval of whatever the activity is. But if you just go up one sentence before that, which segues into that, the certificate of approval, then, you know, one would then say that we were talking about the sanitary permits, the health, no?
This special authority granted to the mayors does not negate any of the government requirement to be in check. Maybe they have to go.
No, that's right. I understand. I mean, what it's saying is that the mayor's stamp of approval does not mean that you don't have to comply with, with, you know, health standards and, and other safety standards.
I know, especially.
But, but it seems that what we're talking about is, I'm just confused that because the sentence before it talks about, you know, the such as but not limited to health and sanitary permits, if such involve the handling of consumables. Now I'm a little confused as to just what that certificate of approval is.
Your questions are very well taken, Senator Ada. Maybe the co-sponsor might be able to answer the question?
Believe me, I didn't realize. You know, there's no signature. But anyways, no, he brings up a valid point, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Because if there's a certificate of approval, it's confusing because if the mayor is the official sponsor, why is he approving himself? So, you know, I mean, if the mayor, once again, certificate of approval, if the mayor is the official sponsor, why is he approving himself?
I'm not sure if that was the original bill, but.
No, it's not. It's an amendment.
We're on number seven. We're still discussing this issue. And on line seven of the last page, the certificate of approval, the question is, what is exactly is this certificate of approval? And if you ask me, this, this is almost like you're doing it twice because the mayor is the official sponsor. If you read through, he is officially the sponsor of this activity, then why is he having to approve himself? If you read further in, on the bill.
I'm going to take a minute.
An amendment on the floor. Well, Mr. Speaker, we have an amendment.
We're back. The legislature's back in session. Senator Muñoz Baran, do you have a motion?
Hi, Mr. Speaker, if I may, just based on the...
I'm sorry, just a point of order, Mr. Speaker. Can I withdraw my proposed amendment?
You may withdraw your amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, we are working some clarifications and looking at some Guam Code annotated regulations that already exist today, so can I just move to pass...
We'll suspend our discussion on this bill and we'll come back to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill 200, Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill 200-30 be placed on the third reading file for the purpose of discussion and consideration, and if I may just give an overview, Mr. Speaker.
Hearing no objection. Please.
Mr. Speaker, this bill, again, this came about during my review in the budgetary process. Eventually, there were the end on me that some of the salaries for these legal officers of some of the government entities are in the six figures. And so I look back and on my own volition, I look at the AG, and the bill actually proposes to make some adjustments. But let me just give a big background. When the Office of the Attorney General became an elected office through public law 25-44, and that's about 10 years ago, it sets the salary of the Attorney General as being 90% of the salary of trial judges. And so that, of course, currently translates at $100,000 for the judge, that means 90,000. But earlier this morning, I think there was a debate about the salary of superior judges at 110. So even 110, that would be 99. But again, going back, I didn't notice within the budget for the AG whether that even was taken into consideration. However, Mr. Speaker, 10 years ago, there were no other positions that may be compared more accurately with that of the Office of the Attorney General. So the position of judges was used as a benchmark. Now, over the 10-year period, of course, there have been an evolution, of course, in the legal systems. And now, a lot of these legal officer positions have been established with compensation rate that is, like I said, in the six digits. And I present this very well on page two. Again, all these figures were taken from the budget submission of all these agencies. And as you can see, Bill 200, actually, Mr. Speaker, is not so much the compensation issue, but the equity issue here. The Public Defender Service Corporation, because the salary is not really established by law, but by negotiation with the board of directors, is at 120,000 plus benefit for a package of 155. And go on down, the Civil Service Commission, I know that that's 120,000, that's in the budget. Again, that's negotiated by the commissioners. The same with the Port Authority, they have a contract, at least based on their FYO expenditure, that's 577,000, the Port Authority. And so on down, and the Attorney General's office, because it's fixed by law that it cannot exceed more than 90% of the trial court judges, that actually it has not grown. So there is beginning not to be some very substantial inequity developing here. And this bill proposes to put parity and recognize, I guess, the inequity here and remedy it to some extent. And I use the offices of the other legal officer position within the government of Guam, because now we have sufficient number by which to compare with the Office of the Attorney General. 10 years ago, I think the proper benchmark at that time was the salary for the judges. But now, when we compare the Public Defender, for example, with the Attorney General's office, we can say that they are exactly the same, except that one is the counterpart of the other, with respect to complexity, to workload, to responsibility, to the sensitiveness of the issue. We can say that they are the same. I guess the Civil Service Commission is a specialized activity, the Legal Council, the GPSS. But if you look at all of this, and that is why I presented this, in the hope that this body can consider this and perhaps remedy, to some extent at least, the inequity that developed inadvertently because of the other legal officer position. Compensation was established by the board that governed those boards or commissions, and it's not by law. The Office of the Attorney General, the compensation is established by law, and only this body can actually amend that. And that's why I present this. So, you know, for the sake of equity and parity, I would like the members of this body to consider that and see how we can finalize this and, you know, make it a good bill. And I ask all of my colleagues for their consideration. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Very well-stated support for the bill and listing. Anybody else wish to speak on the bill? Senator Guthard, then Senator Pangolin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise to support the bill. I think it's very important and very timely. As I look at the compensation packages of the government of Guam for various positions, particularly those at a managerial level, and in some cases, policy levels in the executive branch, real high leadership levels, I often wonder why there are so many inconsistencies. And I also think of the challenges we face to identify really competent individuals, well-trained, professional folks, to fill these critical, critical positions. And public service, of course, is a vocation that many, many people have and are committed to. But we are now in a circumstance where many of our talented folks are pulled away from public service in the government of Guam into private practice, or private organizations, or the federal service. And this is quite disadvantageous to our government. With reference to the position of Attorney General, I was very shocked to see the disparity in the way this government compensates its attorneys at the highest levels. I was quite shocked to see the variances in attorney fees paid, or attorney compensation paid at the Public Defender's Office, the Civil Service Commission, the Port Authority, the Guam Port Authority, the university, even the attorney for the Guam Public School System is paid more, much more than the Attorney General of Guam. We all know the Attorney General is really the chief law enforcement officer of this territory, has immense responsibilities, both in civil law, criminal law, administrative law, you name it. And yet, we seem not to value this position very much. We give more credence to autonomous agency attorneys than we do to our own Attorney General. So I am very pleased to stand to support this bill. And I would hope that my colleagues would understand the criticalness of attracting very well-trained attorneys to serve as Attorney General. And to be able to get them to look at this rather than look at private practice or practice in other venues, I think this is an important factor to consider, the compensation package. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthard. Would somebody please get Senator Pangolin? He's up next.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker...
200.
Bill 200 is another one of these things that I'm a little uncomfortable with, especially because this is something that everybody knows what they're getting themselves into. We know what the salary is. You know, otherwise, let's just hire somebody from Yale and get the best Attorney General we can and pay him. Because to get people to run, really, it doesn't depend on the salary. I mean, in my opinion. They talk about wanting to serve the public, they talk about giving back to the community, they talk about, you know, being a public servant. Well, now we just want to make sure they're well-paid public servants. And to compare it to the comparisons in here just aren't real, because the salaries were set by somebody else also. I mean, the Guam Public School System Legal Council, that's his present salary. But when that person started working there, you know, that's because he's been there for 25 years. So he didn't just walk into the job and got paid $107,000, or $102,000, or $130,000, including benefits. He's a classified employee who has worked through the years. But the Attorney General just walks into the office and gets 90,000, or 91, or whatever the current salary is. So they know what that salary is at. And again, you know, to grant these pay raises, when we're looking at our own classified employees, why do we want to give them to elected officials? Let's just all wait. And again, I do want to recognize that while I say, "Let's just all wait," that this body has debated the issue of, can we wait and can our community wait for some of the more critical ones? You know, can our community wait for our teachers who are leaving? No, we can't. Can our community wait for our police officers, you know, who are losing? No, we can't wait, because, and so forth. Can our community wait for nurses? No, we can't wait. We need to do that now, and we need to find a way to do it now, because of the critical services that they provide. But the Attorney General, I mean, we can get Attorney Generals to... We had four candidates or three candidates the last time. And I don't think any of them were running, was running for the money. You know, they get a good salary, they get a good staff, they get to the prestige of running the largest law firm on Guam, they get to write articles in the paper, they get to write, to go to conferences, they get paid to, you know, hold marches and do community events. So it's not reflective of the salary. So, it's not reflective of the salary, it's reflective of the character of that person to come and contribute to the community in an elective process of getting that job, just like we all do here. I mean, nobody here was running to get rich. And, you know, we're all running, understanding that this is the salary we're going to be paid, and these are the demands of the positions we have. And we get good candidates, generally, we get very good candidates for this public service position. And, you know, to, again, grant this pay raise to that position, you know, to me, it's just not the time, and maybe it shouldn't even be, you know, that shouldn't be the motivation. And it is not unreasonable to offer this kind of salary that is currently there now, and so forth. We're adjusting the salaries of the judges, she's going to get some kind of adjustment, there must have been some kind of rationale for pegging the position to a salary from somebody else. And if that's no good anymore, then okay. You know, so, what do we, why do we need to, and the magnitude of the increase even is a little bit, you know, for me, a little bit hard to swallow. So, again, I speak from the perspective of, you know, is it necessary? Do we think that this increase in salary is going to give us a better Attorney General? I say we got the best one the last time, you know, because that's who the people of Guam wanted, and that's who was willing to serve the people of Guam at that salary. Now, if she's going to resign and move on to another position, you know, is she doing it because she's only making $91,000, and she could maybe make, what, $140,000, $150,000, let's say, as U.S. Attorney, or something like that, here on Guam? I don't know. Is that a problem? Are we going to lose her to the U.S. Attorney's Office, because that's a much more attractive office, or even much more prestigious office? What reason could it be? If it's purely money, then, again, that just goes to the character of the individual when they place themselves before the people of Guam, on whether or not they're going to fulfill their obligation and their commitment to the people of Guam, regardless of how much they've got, you know, whether they get a pay raise or not, because that's the commitment they made. And if that's going to change because of this, you know, then maybe we didn't get the best candidate. But I think we did. I think the people of Guam did okay. And I don't know that this is, at this time and this moment, when we do have other requirements and other needs for our scarce resources, that this is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Pangolin. Any other senators wish to be heard? Senator Espaldón.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, again, to reiterate what I said earlier, when we were talking about pay raises and for the judiciary, and to echo the sentiment of the previous speaker, I don't think it's time right now to start doling out pay raises. I understand the arguments of the author, and I actually appreciate it, because there is some sense of lack of equity amongst the attorneys, in terms of, you know, the public defenders, and all the other services, and then you have our Attorney General making $90,000. But then also, you start thinking about even our governor. I mean, if we start going down this road, then we have to, we have to look at the whole, right? And if we're going to start at the top of the echelon here at the Attorney General, she's our, the head law, Department of Law Officer, then we should actually probably even start even higher, if we're going to start going from the top down, right? And we should even address perhaps a governor's salary, which I believe stands at $90,000. And there are a lot more people within our government who actually makes more than the governor. But that's not what we're here to do, and that's not what we're here to talk about, and I don't think it's even time to talk about that right now. We are anticipating a buildup, we're anticipating some revenues that will come in, but even with those revenues that do come in, at least in the early stages, there are a lot of other areas that we need to channel the money to, to make sure we're functional. I mean, right now, I, you know, off the top of my head, I think 90-some percent of revenues, of Guam revenues, goes to salary, or 80-some percent, whatever that figure is, all I know is it's a very high percentage, that no business, or no enterprise, would be able to survive with that kind of rate, in terms of amount that would be paid towards salaries, and all the rest, you know, the minuscule rest goes to supplies and operations. So, to start talking right now about giving pay increases, it seems like we're going to start opening the door for many other positions, and I'm not really sure that that's a wise thing to do. In fact, I'm sure that's not a wise thing to do, because I know that we do not have the finances right now to open the doors wide to address everybody's pay raise. I agree with the previous senator, in terms of, I think we should wait a little bit longer in addressing these things, let the Hays study go through. And if we are going to address pay increases for people throughout our government, we should look at it as a whole, as opposed to doing it one by one. Because in the end, if we do it one by one, we won't even know what our expenditures are, what the anticipated expenditures are for this fiscal year. So, again, I would have to, even though I understand the rationale, and I probably do agree with it, now we're talking about having, if this passes, we'll probably be talking about Attorney General gets paid more than the judges. And again, and many other people. But if they're, I don't think that the money is in the bank right now to be able to start looking at doling out pay raises of this magnitude at this time. So, with all due respect to the author, I would have to oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Espaldón. Any other speakers on the bill? There being none? All right, Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
I would like to proffer an amendment before I, you know, close, and that is on the effective date, just in the event that, effective date, of course, the amendment would be January 1st, 2010. It cannot be 1st of October, 2009, so, that is an amendment, and then, of course, it's the effective date to be January 1st, 2010.
Everybody have, understand the amendment? Senator Pangolin on the amendment?
Thank you very much. Again, Mr. Speaker, October 1st, 2010, it's the same time. That time, when we say the time is not now, it means, for me, it's not this fiscal year, it's not this, this moment, in addition to not this moment. If we're going to do this, maybe we should do it upon the next Attorney General's election. So, it shall be, you know, at the expiration of this term, or at the, or upon the swearing-in of a new Attorney General, so that we know, people can know. I mean, again, I oppose it in general, I just don't think it's necessary, and so, I object to that.
All right. The amendment is to change the effective date on page three, line 12, to read 2010, as opposed to 2009. There is an objection. All those in favor of changing?
I guess I didn't make the motion. I moved that the 2010 date be changed to 2011. Is that when the new Attorney General comes in?
January 6.
Right. Twenty...
2011.
2011. 2011.
So, it'll be...
Amendment with the intention of amending it to be the new Attorney General would be 2011.
That's an amendment to his amendment?
To his amendment.
On the Pangolin amendment, to have it on the swearing-in date of the new Attorney General in January 2011, are there any, anybody wish to speak on that? There, is there an objection to the amendment reading the installation of the new, swearing-in of the new Attorney General in 2010? No objection. The effective date is amended to January 2011, the installation of the new Attorney General. Senator Palacios, do you wish to close? Unless, of course, one more time, anybody else wish to speak on the bill? Senator Palacios, please close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a clarification, my earlier amendment that was amended actually is, I just don't want it to be effective as it's shown, and that's why, but I think it's good that it will be at the swearing of the new Attorney General. Now, I'd like to close by saying, Mr. Speaker, that, reiterate my position, that this is not so much a matter of compensation, but more so a matter of equity and parity. If you look at page two, you can see it there, right there, I mean, again, by not acting on this, then we continue to, that these conditions exist. And that's why I just feel that this inequity be remedied to some extent. It may not be 120, it could be 110, 115, that's what I mean by, maybe to some extent, it can be remedied. Mr. Speaker, more and more, the Attorney General is relied upon, of course, as the ultimate legal advisor to this government, even the governor's legal counsel, even our own two attorneys here, they provide guidance, and, but when there is a very fine line, I think everybody goes to the Office of the Attorney General for the ultimate advice. And then, from there on, we formulate our decision and our judgment as to how to act, based on that advice, not on the advice, even the Civil Service Commission, even the police departments are the legal advisor. So, again, I guess the compensation is just reflective of the importance of the position, the complexity of the position, the honor of the position, and that is actually why I propose this. There's no additional appropriation requested here, other than, you know, if funds are available, then fine. But at any rate, if my colleague would, again, consider that we will delay the implementation to 2011, January 1st, then that's fine, at least, there is a light, so to speak, at the end of the tunnel, in remedying the existing inequity and disparity. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to make the motion, move it down?
Yes, I move that Bill 200 be moved to the reading file for consideration.
For voting today, any, for voting, to voting file. Any objection? Senator Rispicio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, notwithstanding the House rules, I make that motion to revert back to motions for purposes of putting something on the consent calendar.
Any objection?
Thank you. Now, we're under motions, Mr. Speaker. I passed out, and I was able to get 11 out of 12 members of the Committee on Rules to vote yes on Resolution 237-30, and it's relative to amending Rule 29, Code of Ethics and Standards for the Legislative Branch, Section 29.04.03, powers subsection II, and forwarding this rule's resolution to the full legislature for ratification. Since this has been adopted by the Committee on Rules and the ratification is pending, I move that this be placed on the consent calendar.
Any objections?
Thank you. Notwithstanding the House rules, I move then that we go to the consent calendar.
Any objection?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Now that we're on the consent calendar, I move then to move the same Resolution Number 237-30 to the voting file. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, then I move back to the second reading file to pick up where we left off.
You're not going to vote on this today?
If there's no objections, Mr. Speaker, then notwithstanding, I withdraw that motion, and I then move to the voting file, so we can dispense of this one item, just this item.
Any objection to voting on just this one resolution? I note that there are three senators that are not in the hall, and we're not aware that we are going to be voting today, and I, do we want to vote without the three that are...
Just for this one item, Mr. Speaker, I think it's time-sensitive, considering what's before the body, this resolution.
All right, fine. If there's no objection, we'll vote on just this one item, just the resolution. Clerk.
If there's consensus for...
Is this going to be just a show of hands, or a roll call? All right. Roll call, on Resolution 237-30. Relative to amending Rule 29, Code of Ethics of Standards for the Legislative Branch, Section 29.04.03, powers subsection II, and forwarding this for the legislature's full ratification, would the clerk call the roll?
Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogun?
Senator Gag.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Cabal? Senator Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Espaldón?
Yes.
Senator Guthard?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Ogun.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolin? Senator Rector? Senator Rispicio? Senator Tadegui? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat?
Mr. Speaker, before you call the vote, I move that Speaker Wampat and Senators Tenorio, Cabal, and Rector be excused from the vote we just took.
There being no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The vote 11-0. The motion passes. Four absent.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, I move to revert to the second reading file, and to recess until 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning.
Thank you. We'll recess until 9 o'clock tomorrow morning. Senator Ada, we'll start with you on 207.